Welcome, everybody. To go ahead and call to order this regular meeting of the Yuba City City Council for April 20th, 2021. A few things I need to read first. Let me officially open the meeting. The Governor has declared a state of emergency to exist in California as a result of the threat of COVID-19. The Governor also issued Executive Order N-3320, which directs Californians to follow public health directives, including the canceling of large gatherings. The Executive Order also allows local legislative bodies to hold meetings via conference calls while still meeting state transparency requirements. Public health and well-being are the top priority for the city of Yuba City, and you are urged to take all appropriate health and safety precautions. How to participate in this virtual meeting? This meeting is utilizing the Zoom application for live broadcast. For this meeting, we will be using the questions and answers functionality of this tool in order to accommodate public comment. On your device, the question and answer section of the app is located at the bottom of your Zoom screen. For those that would like to comment during this meeting, please enter your comment into the question and answers portion of the app, and be sure to state the item you will be commenting on. During the public comment of each item, staff will read aloud the comments provided by the public for all to hear for that specific item. Be timely with your questions, as once the public hearing is closed, or the item has been discussed by the council and voted on, no more comments will be accepted for that item. Sierra, may I have roll call, please?
Mayor Boomgarden.
Here.
Vice Mayor Shaw.
Here.
Councilmember Espendola.
Here.
Councilmember Harris.
Here.
Councilmember Kirchner.
Here.
All right. If you would please rise for our invocation by the Vice Mayor, and if we could have the pledge of allegiance by Mrs. Barkhouse after the invocation.
Before we pray tonight, there's many lessons that we can learn from the Bible, and one of those in the book of Mark is simply, "Be at peace, because God has a plan." So no matter what we're faced with, God has a plan. Let's pray. Definitely, Father, we just thank you for this day. We just thank you for this awesome responsibility and honor to serve our city. Father, we just pray that you'll just give us clarity, wisdom, and vision for the future as you would have it here in Yuba City, and we give you the glory in Jesus' name. Amen.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. City attorneys report on closed-session items. Mr. Chaffin.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. There was no reportable action taken in closed session. And just so the public knows, in addition to the announce-out that we do after any particular closed session or meeting, I also do a courtesy notice announce out of any special meetings at the next regular meeting, so that the public has additional opportunity to hear if there was any action taken in closed session. So I just wanted to let the public know that as well.
Thank you, Mr. Chaffin. Agenda modifications? Any modifications?
Through the mayor?
Yes.
We'd like to continue Item 10 to the next regularly scheduled meeting.
We'll be continuing Item 10. Presentations. Retirement proclamation for our Assistant Police Chief Jeremy Garcia. I'll be issuing a proclamation. I invite the council to join me down in front with Mr. Garcia.
It's my honor this evening to read this proclamation on behalf of the City Council for Assistant Chief Garcia. Chief Garcia has served the city of Yuba City very professionally, respectfully, for his time. His departure, you know, is one of those departures that will be missed. He is, like I said, a consummate professional, and this proclamation certainly is almost an understatement to the things that you've provided to the city. But here we go. Whereas Jeremy Garcia was hired as a police officer by the city of Yuba City on August 21st, 2001. Before coming to Yuba City, he previously worked as a police officer and a police sergeant with the Marysville Police Department from 1993 until 2001. Here at Yuba City, he successfully completed and was selected to the positions of police sergeant, police lieutenant, police commander, and assistant chief of police. He has been recognized with numerous awards and commendations for his exemplary professional performance, including over 25 letters of appreciation from the public, his peers, and supervisors. Most notably were his letters of recognition as a member and leader of the Yuba City SWAT team during critical and dangerous missions. Assistant Chief Garcia demonstrated his thirst for knowledge by completing the following: Bachelor of Science degree from the University of San Francisco while being a full-time employment with the Yuba City Police Department. He's a graduate of the LAPD West Point Leadership Program, and a graduate of the FBI National Academy. Assistant Chief Garcia took an oath when he was hired: preserve, protect, and defend the Constitution, an oath he never broke. And he kept faith with the public he so honorably served for 28 years. Now therefore, let it be resolved that I, Mark Boomgarden, Mayor of the city of Yuba City, on behalf of our entire City Council and the citizens that we serve, do hereby congratulate Assistant Chief of Police Garcia on the occasion of his honorable retirement May 1st, 2021. We all wish him the very best in his future.
Well, I think first and foremost, I want to lead off with a few thank yous. I definitely want to thank you, Mayor, and members of the City Council, your support over the years. I can't tell you how much that means to me and our police department. Definitely my family, who have always been my biggest cheerleader, even sometimes if I didn't deserve it. I would like to thank Chief Landon for his trust and friendship over the years. The men and women of the Yuba City Police Department. I appreciate the fact that you've allowed me to be a part of your team and make me feel like we stood for something very important. And I think last and not least, the citizens of Yuba City, I'd like to everybody to know how, what an honor it was to serve this community. The support that we've been shown over the years has meant a lot. And I'd be lying if I didn't say that it feels a little bit weird to be stepping away from something that's been so important for the last 28 years, but I'm really excited about for what the, you know, for what the future holds, and I'm walking away extremely comfortable knowing that this department is in very good hands. And with that, thank you.
Chief Landon? Do you want to do it down here?
So I'm not going to say too much, because I don't want to get sentimental right now. We have a luncheon coming next week, but this is probably one of the best officers you'll ever see. Can't say any more than that, and he's going to be missed by all of us, so. And that's his father sitting next to him. Want to make sure we recognize him. He used to work for Sutter County Sheriff's Department also, so. Jeremy, thank you. We will make it without you, but we will greatly miss you, and it will be a lot harder without you.
Item number two is a police department presentation. This will be presented by our Chief of Police, Rob Landon.
Good evening, Mayor. Councilmembers, thank you for the opportunity to speak in front of you this evening. I would like to say that that was a proclamation for Assistant Chief Garcia. We have a lot more stuff in store for him next week during his actual luncheon, and we didn't want to spoil it because his wife is out of town, so we kept it under control. Thought my guys were going to join me up here, but apparently they're not. So basically, what we're going to cover tonight in a rather timely fashion will be the basic structure of the police department, our calls for service, the Uniform Crime Reporting, Part One Crimes, and I'll explain what that is in a second, and areas of emphasis for the upcoming year. And then I'll open it up for any questions. We may be going back and forth here. Okay. So just a few photos of our men and women who work so hard for the public, and we appreciate the support, like Assistant Chief Garcia was just saying. This is one of our events during COVID. It changed how we do law enforcement last year, and this was our, I believe, our national or our open house last year. We had to compromise and do it as a drive-through type message, but we still wanted to be part of our community to come in and see the police department. We still wanted to be able to talk with them and see them as well. These are some of our motor units. Lieutenant Slade and four of our, or three of our current ones, and then Sergeant Cooper in the back, who has since promoted to sergeant. One of our Canines was no longer our Canine. Now we have a new Canine. Trying to figure out a name for him right now. This was Fasco, right? And the new one is going, was currently named Rip, because that was his name when we got him. So we'll be bringing him here to council as well, and hopefully he'll be a little bit more controlled than Fasco was. This is Sergeant Hauk on his department, a private motorcycle, and this was during the same national night or the open house. Again, during COVID, we've had a lot of support from the community. A lot of people have brought things by to support the police department, just to stop by, and it's really brightened the day for a lot of our officers who are not seeing the kids at school anymore right now until this past couple of weeks. So we look forward to all those visits and highly encourage anybody that wants to plan a visit to bring their kids by anytime. So a little bit about the police department. We are allocated 67 sworn officers, and we currently have 64 sworn positions filled. A sworn officer is somebody that can, basically, they uphold the law. They go out and they enforce the law and do all the things that are associated with that. We have three open positions, but right now we have three people in background, so we are fully staffed as we speak right now. We are anticipating a few retirements and some attrition, so we continue to put people, the recruitment with human resources, and that continues to be one of the biggest deficits in the United States right now, is trying to get officers to continue to work in law enforcement. It's a trying time for us. There's a lot of legislation that's coming up. We have a great responsibility to the community, and we also have a lot of things that we need to do to uphold our end, and it makes it difficult sometimes to attract new people coming out of college and everywhere else. But we will continue to do that, and we will continue to make sure that our city is fully staffed, and if not fully staffed, we're fully capable of responding to any type of emergency and continue to work towards those goals. We have 25 civilian staff. We have three dispatcher vacancies, toughest position in law enforcement, and the toughest position to fill, because it's not the most recognized, and they don't get, they are the ones that take the first calls or the first point of contact for the police departments. They don't get to see calls, the outcomes for them. They dispatch for fire and medical as well. Lot of responsibilities there. We have 12 square miles of jurisdiction, and we cover five beats. Our budget, I believe that's off, though. I got that figure. I think Spencer's here. I think it's closer to $16 million, but at $17.3 million, that's about 38, 35% to 40% of the budget. From 2010 to 2021, our population has increased from 64,000 to 70,000. Back in 2008, we had the big recession. It caused us to lose some positions in order to help the city meet the budget demands and to help us to make sure that we were, we could best meet the needs of the city with the well-being as resourceful as possible. So our staffing has decreased from a high of 103.5. We don't have a half person. That's actually reserves count as a half person, because they're not a full-time position, to 96.5 persons. And we are working with the council right now. They're looking and exploring opening up more positions as we look at the budget, and hopefully we'll be able to work back gradually as we go through time and everything else. A couple more pictures of our officers and some of our CSOs. The difference between a CSO, Community Service Officers, they respond to cold calls. They don't carry a gun. They drive a black-and-white unit. They don't have the same emergency equipment. So although they look similar, they are, and that would be the female on the left, Erica Broussard, and then the School Resource Officer. We have officers at both high schools. They attend to all the different schools and school events, and they're right there in case of emergency. Our Community Policing Coordinator, who is right now in a public information officer school in San Diego or somewhere down in Southern California, one of our traffic officers, and then one of our female officers, Tamara, who was a CSO at the time. So we do promote people through the department. Sometimes their goals change. She's wanted to be a sworn officer. She worked herself through the academy, and as a result of that, she's one of our best officers right now, and we're really proud to have her. This is our Citizens Academy. We try to do this two times a year, wherein we highly encourage you, if you haven't been to Citizens Academy, to attend this. It's a 12-week program, and we teach you all about the police department, and then hopefully we get you to become a volunteer at the department, which are very important positions at the police department. So types of calls that we respond to at the police department. These are our top nine calls. I think I probably cut out the top 10, so it's going to be our top nine. And this is out of 46,000 calls a year. So number one call, transients. Number two is welfare checks, and if you go through there, you'll see the other ones. Alarm calls continues to be a high-volume call. It's a two-person call, because we never know if it's an actual burglary in progress or if it's a false alarm. We do have an alarm program now that we issue citations or fines, not citations, but fines if somebody continuously has calls for a faulty system and they're not doing, making the efforts to fix it. So what is UCR reporting? Because that's what we're going to talk about a little bit here. That's the Uniform Crime Reporting System. And basically, it's a way that the FBI, through the International Association of Chiefs of Police, they wanted to figure out ways to kind of comparatively look at statistics across the United States and compare apples to apples. So there are, I believe, seven different Part One crimes. Part One consists of felonies mostly, homicide, rape, robbery. No, I need my glasses. Aggravated assaults, property, and those are the violent crimes, and property crimes are burglary, larceny, and motor vehicles. So instead of reading all those stats, I'm just going to go to the, and Part Two crimes are basically simple assaults, forgery, embezzlement, fraud, vandalism, lesser crimes that are not tracked by the FBI, but we keep statistics on those anyways, just to see how our progress is during those times. I hope you can see this. So these are three different years you're looking at here. It's 2018, 19, and 20, and these are the seven different Part One crimes. You have larceny, which you can see is dropped from 2000, whatever I said, 18 to 2020. Burglary has increased by about 30 over the past three years. Motor vehicle thefts has been on the rise. We do have issues with that. We're working currently with different methods to try to combat that. Aggravated assaults, it's kind of stayed the same. Robberies, it was down from two years ago, but up from last year. Rapes, and rapes are not what you might think of when you see, when you hear the term rape. Mostly, it's a domestic-type thing, a spousal thing, where they're separated. Child, or not child, but teenager-type things. It's not stranger rapes. We don't get a lot of those. We did have one this past year, which is classified, and we just recently arrested him through DNA. Homicides, they change from one to three to four. So, and out of those four, I think we've made three arrests, and actually made four arrests, but one, we didn't have enough to hold the person, not enough probable cause. So last year, Part Two crimes were down a total of 17.65%, and Part One crimes were down 1.1 per thousand. You'll see that in this next status. The only reason I put up 1988 is because I know social media makes us very aware of crimes that are currently happening in Yuba City, but it tends to kind of exaggerate the numbers a little bit, because you're seeing everything. If you look back to 1988, you'll see that the crime rate back then was 113.1 per thousand people. It was very high. Now, currently, we're at 29.8, and you'll see that from 2012 to 2020, it's held pretty much the same with a few peaks. Last year, it was 29.8. It was down from 30.9 the year before. Even with COVID and everything else going on, and we did see spikes, like we talked about in different areas, the total crime rate was down by 1.1. These are just numbers from NET-5. The arrow indicates it was greater than the year before, less than the year before. NET-5 is our local multi-jurisdictional task force and handles gangs and narcotics, and it's with Yuba County, Marysville Police Department, Sutter County, and Yuba City Police Department work with probation, as well as Wheatland Police Department. Sometimes we do run into some bigger cases than other cases. These are all from last year. Lot of guns out in the street right now, a lot of drugs still out on the street. The Reds, obviously, are either the Bloods or the, the Bloods or the Norteños gangs. Lot of affiliates around here. We have an investigation unit staffed with six detectives, one sergeant, two CSOs, and then a new tenant. A new tenant basically is a retired officer who's working without the benefits, and he's only allowed to work up to 960 hours a month or a year. We use them for cold cases. He's currently working on two homicide cold cases, and we're almost to the point of extradition out of Mexico, so he's been doing a really good job last couple of years. And then we do have humid trafficking in the area, and we obviously have gang-related issues as well. Last year, these are some of their numbers, 234 felony cases they were assigned, took 656 reports, numerous warrants they issued. And now, 2021 priorities. Number one, hiring a police chief, a new police chief. I think he's retiring September the 30th of this year. Continuing our succession planning. We are losing some people at the top right now, and we need to make sure, I think we've had a pretty good plan in place over time of trying to make sure that everybody's prepared to take the next step up and to make sure that they're getting the proper schooling. So we want to make sure and continue to foster that at this department. Other priorities, gang suppression, violent crime suppression, that's always been at the top of the list. Make sure that we have NET-5 and gang task force fully staffed, maintained, and doing, being out there in the public. Realigning a proposition, everybody's heard about legislation and how it's putting less people in jail, creates a lot of issues for us, because there's a lot of repeat offenders out there. There's the consequences, they're not out there anymore that they used to have, and so it does recruit issues, or it does create issues for us. We want to continue now this year to have volunteer and citizens academies. One of the priorities, maybe not 2021, but in the very near future, we've been exploring this continuously, is the Walton Annexation, Police Services for this area. Staffing, we do realize that staffing is very dependent on the current status of what's going on in the country. We're looking to get another homeless liaison officer. If you saw what I put up earlier, the number one calls for service is transient calls, and you see how they're out there right now. We're working through, we understand that law enforcement is not how you're going to solve that, but it is part of the resources, to have the officers out there, to be available, to talk to them, to help them find the right places to go, to work with the different social areas, but also to be out there for enforcement when we need to have them for enforcement. Body-worn cameras, the council got us new cameras last year. They're very, very effective. We want to make sure that we continue to use them in the proper method. One of the priorities, legislation. We're going to see racial profiling. It's called RIPA coming up this year, the Racial Something Profiling Act. It's going to require a lot of independent time on the officers. Every time we make a traffic stop, we have to document a series of perceived things, what we, of race and how we, nationality, sex, and other things that we have to document. So it is going to take officers' time. After every call, they're going to have to document that and send it to the state. Training that goes along with new legislation. Every time there's new legislation, there's new training that goes with it. We want to continue to work with Sutter County and the Fire Department to improve and upgrade emergency operation plans and responses. Chief Alexander's been working really hard on that. And then some of the other public safety, just general comments. We are, our crime rate is below similar cities' crime rates. In California, it's below the national average of cities between 50 and 99,000. As I pointed out earlier, it's less than one-third the crime rate of 32 years ago. The Gang Task Force and NET-5 presence in the Regional Crime Fighting Alliance has done wonders for us. It slowed down a little bit in COVID, because it was hard to get them all together in one spot. We've worked through that. It took a little bit of time through COVID and stuff, but now we're out there doing our twice-a-month sweeps for probation to make sure that people are following the conditions of the probation and parole. And we're gaining intelligence, because we realize we can't be reactive to everything. We need to be proactive. The impact of new legislation on time and training, cost to the officers and staff that go along with that, and we want to make sure that we continue to mirror staffing to meet the demands of the population increases. As a population increases, we want to make sure that we have the officers and their resources to match that. And with that, I will open it up for any questions that the council or the public may have.
We'll start first with the council. Questions, comments? We'll start with you, Mr. Kirchner.
Through the mayor. Thank you for that, chief. I really don't have any questions for you, but I just do, I do want to take this time to reiterate what some of your officers have told me in the public, and that is that they do know that they work in a community that appreciates them, and if they don't already know that, they should now, because it's a tough job. Discussion you and I had previously, you mentioned, on a normal day, an officer has upward to two hours of homework, not homework, but paperwork, excuse me, paperwork, and that's going to go up in the near future, and that's just making a difficult job even harder. And if we can just personally let the officers in the room know that you are appreciated in our community. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilman. And I would like to point out one thing, too, that you will not see in the larger city, is that because of the cost of living in Yuba City and the pay at the Yuba City Police Department to match that cost of living, we have officers who actually live in the community, and you're not going to see that in the Bay Area. You can't afford for an officer to live in San Jose. They're living 50 to 100 miles. They're going away to leave the city. Our officers are staying in the city or the surrounding areas, and I think that brings a lot of community involvement. In fact, I know that there were several people that are coaching Little League tonight, because they had different priorities.
I'd be happy to, if you, chief, thank you very much, and of course, all these numbers and the statistics and what the department is doing, and continues to do, is very impressive and very much appreciated. Every interaction I've had with an officer when I'm away, you know, from here, has been nothing but positive and professional, and I really appreciate it. Recently, it's today, actually, I was just telling a story, kind of funny, but I won't get into that, but they do a great job, and it's really appreciated, and they do know, well, with a couple that I've talked to lately over coffee, they do know and appreciate that they're in a community that appreciates them. And I tell you what, coming from that field, it makes a world of difference, knowing that, you know, when everyone waves with all five fingers is a good, a good thing. I have one question. Do you, has COVID caused you to dial back, if any, your programs? Do you still have the cadet program in place or things like that?
So, yes, a lot of our programs were impacted by COVID. Anything like the volunteers, the cadets, we couldn't bring them into the department, because one thing we need to protect is our dispatchers. We only have a limited amount of them, so we try to keep them isolated from everybody else, and initially, yeah, it is impacted.
I'm assuming, obviously, there's, as things progress back to the new normal, that there's a plan in place to ramp those things back in.
Already in place. They're all coming back already.
Well, thank you again very much, all of you. Really appreciate it.
Councilman?
Thank you. Through the mayor. Well, looking at your priorities, the first priority is going to be a tough one. The idea that you're moving on, that's going to be a big challenge and a lot of work, I think, for Dave, and a void in this community, truthfully, that is going to happen, but your commitment to work all the way through and continue to do the great work that you do. Chief, I'm very proud of you for all of that that you've done for our community. So a couple of things. One of them with the homeless project, we are trying to, or the homeless services within the police department. As a council, I think we're working really hard to try to bring in additional resources for Troy, because those numbers are just impacting the daily life of many the daily life of many people. How do, how do, how do our officers respond in those large numbers, particular when Troy has a limited schedule? You know, he only works so many hours. Otherwise, we would lose Troy because otherwise, he'd be burned out, honestly.
Yeah, well, thank you for the comments. And yes, it is, we assign our calls by priority. So we're going to handle the priority calls first, and then we're going to handle them as they work their way down. But all the officers are involved, and they all are assigned a beat for a reason. They get to know their community, their specific area. They get to know the people that hang out in those areas. They get to meet some of the neighbors. But they also get to meet the transients. And so they get to contact them and try to at least know where they're at at certain times of the day, and if they're going to be a problem at certain times or if they're just looking for help. So it does help the familiarity that Troy's not the only one. It's all the officers taking the interest to at least get to know their beat.
Okay, that's great. I think the work that our police department has done with citizens academies and volunteer work and engaging with community, you know, prevention. I'm a strong advocate of prevention work that you hopefully reduce the action of crime by really engaging within community. And I'm hoping that our policing expands on that more so. And I know that a lot of our officers do that. And that's, that's something that brings me great pride. And I know the GREAT program has been a program that you've done within the schools for many years, a great impact, in the sense, no pun intended, but it actually has reduced some gang activity within young people's lives, in particular, as those numbers seem to be increasing. I'm happy to hear that we're working really hard with the dispatchers and trying to fill those voids. That is a critical, critical piece of our, part of the whole puzzle of emergency services. And I think we're celebrating our dispatchers this week or this month.
Last week, yes.
Last week. So there was a lot of celebration on that. And so thank you for all that you do. And we have a lot of priorities to get through, but we will be meeting as a council, doing some reviews for the next priorities. So we'll take all your suggestions into that piece. Thank you.
Let's council my resume.
You, Mr. Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Chief, if I still had my cowboy hat on from Saturday, I would tip it to you and your entire organization of men and women. You guys do an incredible job. Having the privilege of getting to do some ride-alongs and getting to know your men and women. In today's environment, I could only imagine the tenacity, the caliber, the character of person it takes to put on that uniform every day because you're not only dealing with protecting our citizens, but you're also dealing with the turmoil that's coming down from higher electeds up that keep basically shortchanging you at every turn with the problems we have with the jails and downgrading crimes and stuff. So hats off. You guys do an incredible job, and I have the utmost respect for you guys. The priorities. I'm glad you brought those stats. I know you're doing everything you can to keep us safe. When I ran for office, we had the discussion. The numbers were lower as far as the number of officers at that point in time. And we had a chat, and I said, we don't have near enough. And that's been, our commitment has been trying to get the city taken care of and the obligation things that we have to as a council, which is public safety and infrastructure. Those are definitely top priorities. So I'm glad you're thinking forward. I know the commitment is still here from this council. We're going to look at everything. I wish we had a blank check and could just write it because I don't think 103 is still enough because I see what goes on every day and I see what your men and women have to contend with, the 103 officers. You know, just know the commitment's there. You guys are doing a great job, and I just have the utmost respect for you guys. So thank you for the department, and thank you for looking forward to what we need coming up in the future.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. And just so the public knows as well, we did have a homeless liaison officer come on board last year with the council's help. So that was very impactful for the department.
Chief, thanks for the presentation tonight. It's always great to get an update. And as usual, your leadership is shown very well. I want to thank you and the management team for the budget presentation this morning that the ad hoc committee received, made addressed, and linked up with your priorities. Almost all of them are here tonight. One was, sorry, Sam. But in all sincerity, you know, I can't imagine a more difficult profession right now than law enforcement. And I've mentioned that to several of your officers when I've had the opportunity to sit with them. And I know it's been said here from other members of the council that, you know, I do believe that the public truly appreciates the Yuba City Police Department and the officers and support staff that work there. I, you know, you continue to hear, and I'll run out there and say rhetoric about, you know, defunding police or not supporting law enforcement. I don't believe that's a value of this community. I think our community likes our police department. I think our community values our police department. I think our community, for the most part, respects our police department. I know that I do. And any notion about defunding or scaling back or repurposing a police department certainly would never enter into any area that I would support. And I just commend all of your folks for the job they do on a day-to-day basis. Like I said, I cannot imagine a more difficult environment to work in right now, given the stuff that's going on in the state and in the country. So with that, I will open up for any comments from the public on this item.
Good evening, chief and the council. I will say that I gas up early in the morning and get to talk to quite a few of your officers. And most of them have been cordial and talkative. So, and engaging, you know. That's, I think that's critical to the people. But as far as, I must be living in a little different world, I guess, or just unlucky lately because I'm blown away that the crime is down because it's been up in my world. And I had, you know, bank fraud because our mailbox was broken into. Yesterday, I went to the bank. And I recognize, too, that I'm just not used to thinking that I'm living in a criminal world. But when I went to the bank yesterday, somebody stole my checkbook off the seat of my truck, you know. And I had to talk to one of your officers. And then I went to another bank, and there was a big episode with the homeless woman there blocking the drive-through and, you know, breaking dishes, and you name it. So it was, that's why I say I'm a little blown away. But one thing I was curious about, too, when you mentioned NET 5, that is like multi-jurisdictional, I think, right? And I was reminded of the officer who was dealing drugs and caught on the East Coast. Do you remember that?
I was here for that, yes.
Yeah, I just wondered whatever happened to that guy.
He's in prison.
Good to hear.
Where he belongs.
So, anyway. Bless you on your retirement. So it's probably been a long time coming. I'm looking forward to that day myself.
Thank you, Mr. Burns.
Mr. Mayor. Council members, how you all doing?
Good.
Chief.
I'm sorry to interrupt. I just need your name.
Christopher Burrit, sorry.
No, no, no problem.
Chief, you guys do an amazing job. I see you guys all around my neighborhood, patrolling day in, day out, all night, you know. Everything from traffic stops to chasing down drive-by shootings on Queen, you know. So I really appreciate what you guys do. And I would never be for defunding police either because I think you guys are our last, last, especially city police, our last defense, you know, as citizens before we ourselves have to take arms. But with that said, did I hear correctly? You guys only have less than 40% of your budget covered?
No, the number is, I'm sorry, I misspoke or I didn't come out right. That is the percentage of the police department of the entire budget for the general fund.
Okay, so you guys do, are covered.
Yes, we're the largest organization, the largest personnel in the city's budget.
You guys ever do any fundraisers or anything to help out with, like, get more going and stuff like that?
No, we do, we don't do it for the city, but we do it for certain different entities within the department. Say, we have a K-9 Police Officers Association. They are always doing different fundraisers and stuff to help support that program and to get better things than that. But our council manages to take care of us very well through the general budget.
Cool, awesome. That's, that's great to hear. The one thing that you did say was, did not sound very good, was that RIP that's being passed down? Racial Initiative Program? What was it?
It's called RIPA. That's the thing. The guy behind you could probably tell you what it stands for.
Racial Identifying Profiling Act.
Okay, so that in itself sounds like a violation of the First Amendment. Just saying that no law is being made or legislative being passed down should be, especially on the law enforcement officers themselves, being told to do something against the Constitution. I don't know what the entire program is, but just from what you said, it sounds kind of unconstitutional. Secondly, on that subject, I mean, you guys are going to have to take up more man-hours, more resources. And is there, I mean, we're not Los Angeles. We're not Chicago, you know. We're one of these big cities where things really crazy. I think everybody respects everybody in our community, especially our police officers, you know. And to kind of push that on to you guys as if you guys have been incorrectly profiling or, and you guys need to be held accountable and monitored, I don't think that's, that should be cool. But thank you, and you guys are doing an awesome job. Congratulations on retirement.
Thank you, Christopher. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Anybody else in the audience wish to speak on this item? Seeing none, Sierra?
We do have two comments online. The first comment is from Kevin Conbo. And he wants to know, why not commit to paying the dispatchers more money so they don't train here and move on to departments that pay more?
You want me to handle that, or you want?
I was going to say I was all for it, but I'm.
I'll do it, I'll do it.
The effort to try to pay our public safety personnel in all aspects is a high priority for the city. Recruitment and retention of personnel has been something that's been top of mind of this council consistently since all of us have been elected. And we will continue to try to do that. We have instituted with the chief and his staff's development some methods to keep dispatchers and attract dispatchers. And as those issues continue to impact the police department, we will always continue to take a look at how we can support making sure that the first responder of the first responders is taken care of.
Okay, the second comment is from Scott Bailey. No question, our police department is absolutely amazing. Thank you to all of the department.
I'll let you take that one.
Thank you, I appreciate that. And I just want to say that obviously, it's not us four up here. It's the department. It's the men and women of the department. They appreciate very much, so thank you.
All right. We'll move to item three, which is COVID-19, a discussion and action on the measures to mitigate the impacts of the COVID-19 pandemic. That'll be presented by our city manager, Dave Vaughn.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. Quick update, as of 4:30 this afternoon, we have survived 36 days in our current tier. Case count is 5.7 cases per day with a positivity rate of 2.1. What I will share with you is if you look at the new blueprint put out by the state, the next tier, which is moderate, has case counts from 2 to 5.9. So it appears as though we may be moving into the next tier. We will know more tomorrow when we meet with the Bay County health officer. So I wanted to share that with you. I think that's great news is the positivity rate is really, you know, 2.1. That's right at the state average. And I think everyone's doing, you know, a really good job to try and keep, you know, keep case counts down. So with that, I have no other update, but I'm happy to answer any questions.
Okay, questions from the council? Any comments from the public? Sierra, anybody online?
No public comments.
All right. Public communication, item number four, appearance of internet is interested citizens. Due to COVID-19, residents are encouraged to attend the city council meeting via web conference or submit comments by email consistent with the public health guidelines for social distancing. Limited seating is available in the council chambers. If an attendee does not have a facial covering, one will be provided. Comments may be made either at the council chamber podium. Please participate via web conference or email if you are ill or have been exposed to COVID-19. Any public want to talk about something? Yes, sir, Mr. Burns.
I just wanted to clarify that I'm in the, I don't know what tier everyone else is in, but I'm in the constitutional tier and the personal liberty and personal rights tier. So that's the number one tier for me. But I know there's been a lot about COVID, 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 okay? And vaccine, vaccine, okay? And how great it is. But some of us have differing opinions. And I'm here to put it down in the record, what I think about it, okay? So I'm just going to read a few reports of vaccinated people that have come to my attention, okay? So here's, these are examples, okay? A 58-year-old Washington woman took Pfizer's first dose of COVID vaccine at about 9:00 AM on January 4th at the medical center where she worked as a housekeeper. And one hour later, began to complain of nausea and feeling like she was going to pass out. By 3:00 PM that day, she appeared tired and lethargic, according to a, it's an acronym, report. And about 4:00 PM, she went into cardiac arrest And about 4:00 PM, she went into cardiac arrest and was, was unable to be revived. The next report. A 56-year-old man who worked at an extended care community facility in Florida received a second dose of Pfizer's COVID vaccine on January 12th and was found unresponsive within one hour. He was pronounced brain dead the same day and died two days later. A 58-year-old woman walked to her car 20 minutes after receiving the first Pfizer vaccine dose in the state of Virginia on January 30th. According to the report, she was leaning out of her car, saying that she couldn't breathe and began vomiting. She was administered two EpiPins and an epinephrine gas, but became unresponsive shortly after she was put in an ambulance, where a large amount of fluid was suctioned from the patient's lungs, and she was pronounced dead at the emergency department. A 23, 3-year-old New York man received a first dose of Pfizer's COVID vaccine on January 17th. Patient developed 104.4 temperature approximately 48 hours after be, being given the vaccine. I treated him with antibiotics, fluids, cooling methods, stated one, uh, report filed by a physician. Unfortunately, he suffered cardiac arrest on 1/21/21 in the early morning and expired. A 28-year-old New Jersey man was due for his second dose of Pfizer's vaccine January 11th, but was found unresponsive at his workplace in the hospital. His pupils were fixed and dilated according to the report, and attempts to revive him were unsuccessful. And it goes on and on and on and on. So I want to say, individual liberty, and I know they're trying to force this vaccine on people. I'm not taking it.
Christopher Barrett, Mr. Mayor, council members, uh, city manager, chief, city attorney, this really has to do with all you guys. And I'm gonna reiterate real quick on what, um, sorry, I forgot already his name.
Tom Burns.
Yes, Tom Burns said, uh, to go along with that, a lot of people are being forced already to have to take, uh, COVID tests. I'm a disabled combat veteran. I have to get surgery on my face. They won't let me get surgery without me taking a test. I have no symptoms, anything. That goes to employees and everybody around this community. They are forcing them to take tests if they want to participate in society. That's wrong. That's a violation of our rights of life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness. Secondly, I'm gonna take all the shirt and coating, coating off. All right, this is our city. Our city. If the county is pushing down unconstitutional guidance, not even law, guidance, and forcing our citizens to go along with the tyranny, we need to know, will you guys defend the Constitution? Or will you bow down and kiss the asses of the county and the state? And do whatever the heck they tell you to do to your citizens? I want to know, are you gonna stand up for your citizens? Are you gonna take the side of the bureaucrats, the oligarchs, the aristocrats? That don't give a damn about the way we live, the way our children live, and the way our elderly are dying and being treated? So I'm gonna end it with that. We're about to rise up. The people are fed up. Corporations are telling us that the Constitution doesn't mean crap. Tell an employee to take their mask off at Walmart. They get fired. People lock their salons and you knock on their door, and they have to do it in secret because they're scared of the county and the state, not the city, but the city isn't protecting them. Attorney, chief, you guys need to go in there. If county and state are coming in here and harassing our citizens, you need to tell them to get the hell out or suffer the consequences. Get a lesson in the Constitution. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
Because we are holding everybody accountable.
I'm gonna make the, uh, thank you for your comments. I want to make the, the same comment, um, that I seem to consistently have to and want to, uh, to make in regards to the city's efforts, actions, enforcement, et cetera. I think this city has, has done the right thing by permitting choice. I, I respectfully disagree with you. Uh, there's nothing that we can do about what Walmart's corporate policies are. That's not within. I don't have. Don't have a legal right to do so. I, I hear what you're saying. I'm just telling you, we do not have a legal right to kick a business out. Well, we could get in. We could get into a long political debate, and we may or may not agree. It's a city, school district thing.
So if you just want to pass the buck up the ladder, that's cool. You want to play your pension, you want to do whatever, but I'll tell you now, if you don't do something for the citizens, the citizens are gonna rise up. Period. End of, end of statement. Yeah, I don't need no more comment from you.
Okay.
Because that's it. I'm done with my comment, and I'm just gonna keep watching. And all the views on YouTube, they be, they come because of me. I'm sharing that shit. People are knowing what's happening here. You guys are gonna be an example. You already are. Look at your views. You guys have no views until I start sharing. And you guys are gonna keep getting shared. And you guys are gonna either act or you're not, and you're gonna be shown to the whole world your cowardice.
We can agree to this, respect, or respectfully disagree. I, I, I would hope that we would have the opportunity to talk offline. Maybe I can at least, uh, have a conversation with you, uh, and let you know what we can and cannot do. And I understand the energy you have behind your comments, but this is probably not the place for the time to do that. But if anytime you'd like to come and chat, I'd be happy to do so. Okay, sounds good. Appreciate that. Okay, anybody else?
We have one comment from Kathleen Andress. When are high, when are the high schools going to open up fully?
So here again, uh, and, and I know these answers don't always, are, aren't always met with, uh, the greatest, uh, approval or response. The city of Yuba City has virtually no control over what school districts do. They are a separate local governmental entity. The county is a separate local governmental entity. They have control over the things that they have the control over, and the city has control over things that happen within the city of Yuba City under which, uh, the city, um, laws and regulations, uh, provide us the opportunity or the, the, uh, responsibility for schools, state licensing, what the county does or doesn't do. I mean, tho, those are the, if, if you have an issue with the state, I mean, I'm not trying to dodge anything. If you have an issue with what the state's regulate, regulating to us, then your issue is with the state. If you have an issue with how the county's dealing with things, then your issue is with the county. If you have an issue with how the school districts are operating, then your issue is with the school board. As much as we consistently get asked about doing things in those, in those areas, we just don't, we don't have the ability to do so. I know it's probably confusing, um, but trust me, uh, I know that there are certain things we wish we had some control over, but we certainly do not. And to do so would put the city in potentially harmful way legally. So, um, that's my answer. Anything else?
No further comments.
Okay. All right, consent calendar. All matters listed under the consent calendar are considered to be routine and can be enacted in one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items prior to the time that the council votes on the motion unless members of the city council staff or the public request specific items to be discussed or removed from the consent calendar for individual action. Would anyone from the public like to speak on these items? If so, please come to the podium and state your name and address for the record. Is there anybody here that would like to talk on the consent out, items? Anybody online?
No public comments.
Council?
Through the mayor?
Yes.
Uh, I move to approve consent calendar items five, six, and seven.
Second.
I have a motion by the vice mayor, a second by the, um, by councilperson Esmondola. Uh, everybody's here. Um, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion for approval of the consent calendar passes unanimously. Business items, we're gonna move to item number eight, which is a water supply update. This will be presented by our public works director, Diana Langley.
Good evening, Mayor and council. So I'm first gonna talk about the water sources that Yuba City has. So we have a state water resources control board license, 13855. The annual allotment is 6,500 acre feet, and this would be considered a winter water supply in that it's restricted to time of use of September through June. This typically, uh, is one of our more reliable sources of water, and, um, it's, it's not typically curtailed. And then we have the state water resources control board permit 18558, of which our annual allotments 9,000 acre feet. This again is winter water use, October through June. This one is subject to curtailments on a frequent basis, and what that means is that DWR will give us a notification that we need to stop drawing water from the Feather River, um, during certain times, usually in advance of June. Like this year, I would anticipate that at any moment we would get this curtailment saying quit drawing under this, uh, permit. We also have a contract with North Yuba Water District, of which our annual allotments 4,500 acre feet. This is a very reliable contract that we use for our summer water supplies. We are part of the Department of Water Resources State Water Project. We are a state water contractor. Our, um, annual allotment is 9,600 acre feet contractually. However, um, it is very rarely, prior to the 2013 drought, the average was maybe about a 60% allotment. Um, more recently, it's been much less than that. And in fact, our current allotment for this calendar year is 5%. The last time we had a 5% allotment was 2014. And so this is one that, um, we can draw year round, typically used for summer water supplies, but not as reliable. We also have a backup groundwater well at the water treatment plant, of which we can, um, pump approximately 1,200 acre feet per year. This only goes online during drought situations, and in fact, we did have to bring it online during the, um, the drought that occurred between about 2013 through 2017. It's been off for the last few years. So when you add all of these up, it totals 30,800 acre feet that on paper we have available to us to supply to our citizens. So here's a graph that shows contractual water supply on the left, so that's 30,800. Um, and then you have historical water uses from 2013 through 2020, and then the projected water demand for 2021. You can see in 2013, uh, the water demand was 18,178 acre feet. If I were to project back prior to 2013, I would say that would be about average, where you would be in about the 18,000 acre feet range. You can see that with the water conservation efforts that took place, um, between 2000, really it started in 2014 through 2017, our citizens, our water customers did a really great job implementing those water conservation measures, and in fact, have continued to do a great job in that you don't see big spikes. You don't see where they recovered and started going back to their previous habits of utilizing water. We've stayed consistent within about the 15,000 acre feet per year utilization. And so if you look at our 2021 water sources, um, for license 13855, just based upon the time of use and the volume that we can draw, we're, um, we're estimating we're gonna use about 1,887 acre feet. For the permit 18558, we're estimating 4,443 acre feet. For the North Yuba Water District, we expect to maximize that contract. As I mentioned on the previous slide, uh, the DWR State Water Project, our allocation is only 5%, so 480 feet. And then we will, uh, start the backup groundwater well at the water treatment plant, which would provide us about 1,000 acre feet. So what's important with the DWR State Water Project is for years that we don't use our full allocation, we're able to bank water. And so that is counted as carryover water, and it's, it's complicated in how it's calculated and where it's stored. It's stored in the San Luis Reservoir, and that seems very strange that south of Yuba City is where our water would be stored, but that's really, uh, a calculation, it's, it's how it's, um, accounted for in our contracts as a state water contractor. But with that stored water, we're able to carry it over and utilize it in years when we need it. And when the San Luis Reservoir spills, it resets, and then we're able to build, rebuild that bank. So currently today, we have 4,900 acre, acre feet of carryover water. So that would total 17,218 acre feet that we estimate being available for this calendar year. So going back to what we are projecting for water demand for 2021, at 15,228, and our water supply of 17,218, we project that we will have enough water for this calendar year. However, I want to put a big caution on that because if we did not have that sweepy carryover water available, this is where we would project our water supply to be. And so, um, that's very important. We, we do have a dry year right now. We're projecting to have a very dry year right now. You know, what the unknown is, is what's next year gonna look like? And so to the extent that we can conserve that carryover supply so that we have it as an insurance policy, um, that's great. To the extent that we can conserve that 5% allocation that we have, that builds into our, um, bank. But just want to put that on council's radar in terms of, um, what this looks like. So next steps, we are currently in the process of updating our urban water management plan, which is required every five years. And included in that is our water shortage contingency plan. And if you all lived in Yuba City during 2014, 15, 16, 17, when we had to implement our water shortage contingency plan, we had different stages, and you could only water your lawn certain, during certain days of the week. You weren't supposed to wash your car. Um, there were a lot of restrictions as to how you could utilize the water. Um, this water shortage contingency plan, there are elements that are dictated by the state that have to be included in the plan, as well as the urban water management plan. This plan will come before council in June. There will be a public hearing. We encourage the public to review the plan, provide comments. And then we would expect to adopt in the June timeframe. Also, um, next steps that we're proposing is to distribute educational outreach materials to water customers. As I mentioned previously, our customers did a great job with conservation before, and they already made, uh, changes to their habits to reduce that consumption. Um, what we'd like to do is make sure that our customers are aware that we do have rebate programs available. And so currently, those programs include, um, water since labeled toilets. You can get up to $100 for two toilets per, um, household, per location. We have smart irrigation controls. You can get up to 50% or $75 rebate, whichever is less, and two per location. And then for showerheads, you can get up to $20 and two per location. The other thing is that, um, irrigation systems is, you know, I, I walk my neighborhood every morning, and as I walk around, I see people that don't know that their sprinkler heads are broken, or they don't know that, um, they're spraying into the street. And so those are the types of things that we just want to encourage customers to check the irrigation system. You know, whenever it's scheduled to turn on, whether it's late in the night or early in the morning, set your alarm, go out and look at it, because I think just a lot of people don't realize that that sprinkler head's broken, and it's just shooting water straight up into the air, and it's all going into the storm drain. The other big project that we have going on right now is replacing the radio read meter heads with cellular meter heads. And why this is so important is because our water customers will have access to real-time data related to their water use. And with that, they would have real-time data related to any leaks. So if their meter is continually operating and registering a leak, they can get an alert. And right now, because we only read the meters once a month, it might be a few weeks before you find out that you had a leak, and in the meantime, your bills accumulating, um, you're wasting water. And so with this new system, customers will be able to go online, look at their water usage, and then also set it up so that they can get alerts if they, um, potentially have leaks. So with all of that, I would be happy to answer any questions.
All right. Councilman Kirchner. Councilwoman Esmondola.
Through the chair, through the mayor, where am I at? Diana, um, I, the cellular, uh, the cell, um, I can't talk, hello? Meter retrofit project, they've already, they've been doing that, going out to homes a lot.
Yes.
I've seen the teams and the crews that have gone out. They're very, they're on it. They're very cordial. They're leaving information on the doors, letting folks know that this is happening. So, um, I'm good to, good to see that it's already launched and, and really going out there. So thanks. Appreciate it.
Mr. Harris. Vice Mayor.
I'm gonna make a, a quick statement, and this is based upon, I was invited to take a helicopter tour of the delta, where they included what's going on with the federal and the state water project. And the, uh, I'm, I'm not gonna get into the environmental or politics stuff. I'm just going to signal a big yellow light out there. If you live in the city of Yuba City or in Northern California, please keep aware of what's going on with the, the projects that are, are contemplated to move Northern California water to Southern California because it will have a direct impact on some of what's out there. You can't pump out of a dry ditch. So it doesn't matter what your allocations are. If the water, we have continued, um, short water years. What they're planning to do, uh, and what I, I think they're going to come to consensus on is not twin tunnels, but one tunnel. But that one tunnel will still divert quite a bit of our water to Southern California. And, uh, and so, again, I'm not, I'm not making a political statement here. I'm just saying, be very, very mindful because it will have a direct impact on what Ms. Langley just presented to us.
So I would like to comment on that because being a state water contractor, it's the state water contractors that are, um, it's the state water contractors that are interested in having that project proceed forward. So the north of delta contractors have been in discussions with DWR and the other state water contractors related to. The north of delta contractors don't want to pay for those improvements to convey the water to the south of delta contractors because that's going to be a very costly project. And so we have our attorney engaged. We have our consultant engaged to make sure that we're protecting our water contract and protecting our costs so that we're not tied into the costs associated with that project.
Questions from the public?
No public comment.
All right. Do we have any? Yes, we did have.
So I remember going through that drought situation big time. And the city did conserve a lot of water. And we were rewarded by our water bills going up, our rates increasing. But at the same time, I was working in Southern California in Lancaster. And it was amazing to me, the amount of water that was just running everywhere down there like they could care less. It was massive amount. There was, it seemed like no conservation effort whatsoever. So like what you just talked about, Southern California has taken a lot of our water. But I've said this for years, and many of my friends will attest to it. You might be surprised I have some friends, but I do. The number, the two greatest weapons in the world. Number one is mind control. And we see that full effect in the world today. Number two is controlling the water supply. And that is the facts. Now, as far as not washing your cars, I'm curious if that's going to be tried to be implemented here. What is a man to do? Never wash his car?
So as part of the different stages of the water shortage contingency plan, there are elements in which you would not be able to wash your car like in front of your yard. But you're welcome to visit a commercial car wash because they recycle the water. The other thing is that with the last drought, for those that recall, the state really put mandates on agencies in terms of certain conservation milestones that they had to reach. And they were pretty severe. And then also, the state issued restrictions, regardless of what agencies, water shortage contingency plan said, they issued restrictions that all Californians had to abide by. And so I just saw in the news today that there's a water agency that's voting tonight. Their board's voting tonight in terms of implementing mandatory conservation efforts. With this particular agency, they rely on local water supplies. They're not part of the Central Valley Project, which is a federal project or the state water contractor, state water project. But I think over the next few weeks, we're going to see a lot more discussions related to agencies implementing voluntary as well as mandatory conservation measures. I don't think we're at that point yet. But that's why we want to distribute educational materials to our customers to just try to address kind of the blatant things, like with the sprinklers. And, you know, hopefully with that, we can, you know, really moderate our water supply and be able to extend that carryover bank water that we have.
I would also add a situation to keep an eye on is, you know, people, I think, realize that Yuba City is in the heart of an ag-based economy. And the ag community is deeply concerned right now in regards to water supply. And if you can't grow a crop, then you can't make a buck. And so, again, this whole notion of teaming up to conserve water and being mindful of where our water's going, et cetera. You know, it's convenient at times when we have a good wet winter to just not worry about it. But it's times like this when it really comes to top of mind. So it has a potential for being a really big deal. And I thank you, Ms. Langley, for bringing up, especially if we go through another dry year. I think it's going to be very, very challenging for a lot of folks in our community, including us.
Really, Mayor, I totally agree with you. Sitting on several water boards along with Diana, we are extremely in a good position to have Diana working here in the city to help us navigate within this water issue. She's highly respected, regarded in multiple boards that I'm sitting with her. And she does excellent, excellent work. But the issue of less water availability is a concern repeated over in those meetings. So thank you.
You're welcome. All right. Thank you, Diana. Item number nine is titled An Appeal of the Planning Commission's Approval of Tentative Subdivision Map 20-05 Domain Estates Phase 3. Will be presented by our Development Services Director, Mr. Ben Moody.
All right. All right. So good evening, Mayor, members of the City Council. So the item before you tonight is in regards to an appeal filed for, in regards to Tentative Subdivision Map 2005 Domain Estates 3. And so, start this presentation off, a little project status regarding the appeal. So the Tentative Map 2005 proposes to divide 4.11 acres. It's a parcel in northwest Yuba City into 13 single-family homes. This item was considered and approved at the Yuba City Planning Commission meeting on January 27. An appeal was filed on February 5 in accordance with the city's municipal code by the neighbors to the west regarding concerns related to two-story construction and the impacts associated with a Tulley Parkway right-of-way alignment. So with that, there's a timeline in the municipal code for the hearing to be set. And it was set March 16. And then with further discussion between the appellants and the developer, there was a request to be continued until it's being heard tonight. So here we are tonight, 4:20, to consider the appeal and the suggested changes to help resolve, minimize the concerns. So with the appeal being filed with the city and staff proposing modified conditions ultimately at the end of the presentation, a public hearing is necessary to fulfill the appeal process while also providing a means for council to modify the tentative subdivision map conditions of approval. So bear with me as I work through it. And I'm happy to answer questions at the end here. So project overview, it's Tentative Subdivision Map 2005 Divides 4.1 Acre Parcel 13 Single Family Homes. The project will be approximately 3.16 residents per acre. Project location, northwest Yuba City, off Blevin Road, north of Butte House. If you go north, Blevin Road, you'll take Janus Way, and that turns into Kenneth Way. Right now, it's a dead-end parcel. And so the appellants are the adjacent properties to the west, these residential parcels here where there's the Taslers, I hope I pronounced that correctly, and then the Smiths, and then also the Smiths. Here's a visual of the proposed subdivision. There's 13 lots. One of the key points with this, and it's a little hard to see here, is the proposed Tulley Parkway road right-of-way alignment. And so I'll have some better slides later on. But basically, this property is, the west portion of this property is required as a general plan requirement to dedicate the right-of-way, the ultimate right-of-way for Tulley Parkway. And so, and then you hear, you see Kenneth Way is the extension. There'll be a short cul-de-sac, and then we'll come up in dead-end until future development here with a future outlet street out to Tulley Parkway. So this is a quick shot at the general plan land use designations around the area. So everything in yellow is the low-density residential, single-family, R1 zoning. So the proposed, the proposed use to be divided for residential development is consistent with the area. One of the highlights of this is you see the city-county line. And so this is directly adjacent to the city limit line with the county. There's a table of the land uses. It's just the note, it's currently, the zoning is currently R1 around it. But there is vacant property as, you know, orchard areas and existing residences developed in the county with bigger lot sizes. So staff comments, so with the approval at the Planning Commission, there was a lot of talk about the compatibility of the proposed subdivision, the size of the lots, how they're going to fit with the existing lots. They were a little bit smaller than the existing lots to the south on Janus and Kenneth as they come around. And then also to recognize the rights of the adjacent properties. And so there was a lot of discussion regarding the condition of approval number four that restricted the height of the proposed lots to single-family development, to single-family construction. And so through that meeting, we threw through, and that's been somewhat of a standard policy with the city as far as if there's a development adjacent to existing homes, the staff looks at and considers that and puts a restriction. If not, single-family, it's single-story construction, then other options such as screening or window, restrictions on where they could place the windows to help provide privacy. So with the Planning Commission meeting, the lots adjacent to these, basically the bordering lots here, so 1, 2, 5, 6, 7, 8, and 9 were restricted. And so at that meeting, there was not a lot of discussion about these lots along here. This 10, 11, 12, 13. Staff looked at it that it was across the roadway that's a future Parkway. And so the, it didn't get, staff did not recommend the restriction. And it did not come up at that point with the Planning Commission to recognize it. So traffic, just a quick look at the traffic. So with the traffic, really, this area has been general planned and zoned for development in the city's sphere of influence with general plan roadway. So the addition of 13 homes, there's no anticipated impact that will defect the level of service for those roads. And so Blevin Road is well within its capacity. The additional traffic generated by the proposed 13 residential lots is not adversely, not expected to adversely impact the roadway. Subdivision will also provide access to Tulley Parkway. So it's building half a road outlet. So when the north develops, then they will build that full outlet out. The project is dedicating their fair share of property for Tulley Parkway and some because of the way the alignment, there's a large chunk. It's not just half of Tulley Parkway. There's a significant portion of Tulley Parkway due to accommodating the properties on the west and the ultimate layout that it's, that the right-of-way is not centered. The center line is not centered on the property line. It's shifted over to the east some. And the project, and so a key takeaway on this is this project will not construct Tulley Parkway. They will pay their fair share of the improvements. But at this point, without the right-of-way to the south, the complete right-of-way section, I guess to the north, I want to say to Bradley Estates. And this project is not required to build Tulley Parkway, but it is paying its fair share into the impact fee program. So regarding the appeal, the appeal was filed February 5 by Michael Virginia and Jason Smith and Kevin and Courtney Tasler, neighbors to the west. Those key items, two-story homes were allowed along the west side of the subdivision, which would compromise privacy of homes in the unincorporated area west of the subdivision. And the Tulley Road right-of-way dedication would have significant economic and community ramifications. And so, and we'll start out with the two-story construction. So the developer and appellants have met and agreed to terms related to modifying conditions of approval and adding a condition to provide screening and limit two-story construction on two additional lots. So the city, in conjunction coordination between the appellants and the neighbors, they've worked together. And they've, through that, we've come up with proposed modifications to the conditions of approval to hopefully minimize and reduce the issue with the two-story. And so what we're proposing is for item, for number four, to specifically add in that lots 11 and 12 are to be limited to two-story construction. And then we're going to add a new one. I don't want to call it five because that throws off the numbering. Apologize for the reference here. But we're going to call it 4.1 at the end of it for the recommendation. But 4.1 is going to be the developer shall provide a total of eight 15-gallon trees with a species of these four. And basically, they're going to provide the trees. The Smiths and the neighbors to the west are going to hire a landscaper. They're going to get approval for the cost. The landscaper is going to install it, and the developer will reimburse the Mr. Smith and the neighbors for the cost to install it. And that's to be done before the public improvements are accepted. So here's just a quick page. And so what those conditions are proposing is that single stories would be restricted on lots 11 and 12. But it would allow two-story construction to happen on Lot 10 and Lot 13. Okay, so one of the big items that's, it's hard to clarify exactly. It's with kind of this future roadway, this future Parkway, where it's going to be, how it's going to lay out, and how it's going to affect everybody. And so there's been a lot of discussion regarding Tulley Parkway. And there's been a lot of history with Tulley Parkway as far as when this subdivision was originally approved in earlier, with the earlier maps. So this subdivision was originally approved back in 2005 timeframe. And there's some issues with the complications to it is there's existing right-of-way to the south, and there's existing right-of-way to the north, and trying to tie that in while also trying to minimize impacts to the community. And so with this, staff understands that where the right-of-way of Tulley Parkway goes, it affects, you know, everybody's going to have to twist their head sideways. I apologize for that, but trying to get it on here. So over here, you have Butte House Road. You have the future Queens layout. You have existing homes with existing right-of-way dedicated. And then you have Bradley Estates with the right-of-way dedicated here with the wall and Bradley Estates to tie in. And so part of the concern is you have to connect A to B. And when you swoop around, you want to minimize the impacts to the west. But at the same time, you don't want to make these unviable to build. And with, at what point is the burden to make it unviable? And at the same time, represent, how do we minimize those impacts without completely having to purchase and demolish homes? If that ultimate four-lane Parkway went through there. The blue line, it's hard to see with this. I'll zoom in here on the next one. But kind of the blue line shows where that four-lane Parkway lays out. And that four-lane Parkway lays out based on 2004 general plan where we called for a four-lane arterial and then trying to figure out how to fit that in. So there was some preliminary information that says, hey, a four-lane Parkway goes here. But it's never really got into the weeds on how it lays out. So here's a, try to zoom it in a little bit. I don't know if that helps. But what we're looking at now is a close-up. And so you have the red lines. What we've done here is that the general plan calls for a four-lane arterial. With the recent traffic model update that the public works and city staff has been working through, our traffic model says that we only really need a two-lane roadway with a middle turn lane from north of Queens up to P's. And so instead of having that four-lane road that would come up, you know, come clip off the end of their pool and right on the edge of this building, it's, what we looked at is for cost savings, really to model the new traffic on how we have it or need it. We only need a two-lane road with this center median. And so with that, staff's taking a real close look at, how do we lay this road out? Because this subdivision's coming, where do we put this right-of-way line? You know, where do we put this right-of-way to make it fit, make it work? Where we connect from A to B? We're not overburdening this parcel more than was already previously done, and we're minimizing the impacts. And so if you look real close, what we've got here is a layout that basically has brought the sidewalk and the curb and gutter off of the back properties and swung it over to put this curve in there. And we've done a reduced road section. put this curve in there, and we've done a reduced road section. So instead of just having a beautiful, everybody's got an eight-foot landscape strip with a six-foot sidewalk and 12-foot lanes, what we've done is we've gone through there and said, okay, what's the bare minimum we can through that section? You know, with 11-foot lanes, where can we squeeze a little bit of area out of the parkway so we could have attached sidewalk through here, et cetera, to try to get A and B to connect? And so that is currently what's in discussion, what we've worked out for, at the staff level for the alignment. But, but the item for you tonight is, has to deal with the appeal for, for this subdivision. And so the only way to really, it's hard to push it farther over because you still have to hook it back. And so, so even if we heard, hey, push it all the way over, you know, the road needs to go from A to B in order to get this curve to come in at a certain level, unless you degrade the road to a level that we don't feel is acceptable for a parkway, it's really tough to put more burden onto that property to the east without making it, the lots unviable or having a situation where you don't have a parkway that's really going to flow traffic for the future. So here's a, here's a zoom in on the, on the impacts to the baseball field, and I'll tell you, there has been some visuals that were a lot worse than this. This is, this is draft number four as we've worked through it, you know, if the original, if you went with the general plan four-lane arterial, you know, you're looking at cutting off, you know, this whole, this whole portion of it. And so where we're at now is trying to come up with a, with a construction, with a cross-section that just has the sidewalk and the curb and gutter off that back property line right So with that, and I'm going to defer to the city attorney here to help with my recommendation, but basically, what staff is recommending tonight is that we deny the appeal, but approve the projects with modified conditions of approval number four and 4.1, as stated on the slide, and I'm available for questions and open it for public hearing.
Shannon, did you want to weigh in on anything before we?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think Mr. Moody got everything we needed to get.
Okay, I have a question. So throughout the process, it was my understanding that, that the developer and the Smiths had come to an agreement, is that not the case at this point?
My understanding is the developer and the Smiths have come to agreement with what's being presented, but there is a strong input that they like to consider or for council to recognize that wherever possible to minimize their impacts to, for Tulley Parkway.
So question back to, to council is, not a council, to the city attorney is, how do we do that? How do we memorialize that to meet the intent? If there was an agreement established between the developer and the Smiths, it doesn't appear as if that's embodied in, in the stuff that's been presented to us.
The way that you would do it, council, is you'd go ahead and approve the resolution, but then add the new conditions, number four and 4.1, to address the two-story issue and the screening issue. As for the roadway issue, staff's not recommending any change from what they've depicted, which would mean if the council did want to make a change, we would have to discuss exactly what that would look like as a condition on the tentative map. If the council wanted to go down that way. If you don't, there's no need to change.
Okay.
And so one of the concerns, if I could chime in, is that currently it's designed, it's called for as a four-lane arterial in the general plan. And so to make that ultimate decision is when we come back with the traffic model, we say approve the two-lane, two-lane dedication, and then when we go for construction, that there's a reference that to minimize the impact to it. And so that's where it's a little bit, unless we fully want to push the road over to the east with this condition of approval to say, push the road further to the east, or, you know, we design it to accommodate this shown road section. Ultimately, this, how it's proposed, this subdivision will be in the same location. We're just squeezing everything in between here and there to make it, make it work.
I think, I think I understand the intent. I guess my concern would be, you know, going forward, and maybe all of us are here, but maybe some of us aren't, I mean, how do you get that into an agreement so that it stands the test of time and is, for lack of a better term, codified someplace or identified someplace, rather than kind of a, yeah, that's what we want to do? So that's the question I have. Shannon?
So this evening, you can address that, address, so if I understand what Ben's saying correctly, Ben, correct me if I'm wrong, is the map would approve the profile as, as in our tentative map, as shown on the, as shown to the city council, but during actual construction, staff would endeavor to shrink the road so it would have less of an impact on the east side. Is that what you're saying, Ben?
On the west side, yes. And that's where it's tough with this document, since we're considering the map and the layout on the east, to condition something that's on the west that's future. And so that's where it's tough to document it, except to say, you know, we will endeavor to let the property owners know when the general plan item comes up for correction. I don't, I don't have a good way to memorialize it in five years from now.
Yes, and Ben, you're absolutely correct. We don't have a mechanism tonight to be able to note that on the map. The map only deals with its particular parcel and not the across-the-street parcels, so the council doesn't really have a mechanism in order to make that note, but they can give directions to staff as part of any general plan update with regards, or a road profile update with regards to that area, to minimize the impact on the western property as much as feasible possible. That way you can at least capture options open with regards to the easements and dedications that are provided by this map, but you've also provided guidance to staff to include in a future planning document, such as the general plan or a road plan, a road map. If you're able to do that. Does that make sense?
It does to me. Well, I don't know if it will to the Smiths, but we'll find out here in a minute. All right. With that being said, any, again, any questions for Ben before we get started with the public hearing?
Through the mayor?
Please.
First of all, Ben, thank you for all that, and it looks like you and your team have been hard at work. I only have one question, moving from four lanes to two, looking at that map as it is right now, is that ball field going to be viable, usable, as, as, what the map looks like right there?
As a two-lane, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Through the mayor, I just wanted to confirm on the traffic model that you mentioned, Ben, and the question about the general plan was my concern, mayor, and I think you got that already answered. In the traffic model, if we were to reduce it to a two-lane, would it be adequate if there were, you know, I mean, we're sitting here now, but 10, 15 years later, what's that look like?
So absolutely, so the modeling, it was for build-out of the city sphere. And so it was, it took what was done in 2004, 2006 timeframe, when the general plan, you know, showed four lanes all the way out, and we really took a look at it with our, you know, look at our impact fee reviews, and are we building what we need, not building just what is desirable? And so with that, when we looked at the model, it will handle the traffic flow for build-out of our sphere, and that's where it's called out for these two, to go to two-lane roadways, you know, on the fringes. And our Public Works Director definitely could articulate it a lot more clearly than I can. But really, that's where we looked at, hey, do we really need a four-lane road that goes nowhere? I mean, we have stable lanes, a two-lane road, it handles a lot of traffic. And so that's where something like this is similar, that we anticipate it could handle it.
Just to be clear on my end, not necess, that you're saying a two-lane would be able to handle that growth? Okay, so I'm seeing Diana saying over there. That's what my concern was on the traffic model and as we were going to look at the general plan and how did that connect it to all of that.
And it does keep, when we get down to the intersection with Butte House, it goes into four lanes here, so it helps with the turning movements. And so really, that parkway, they're supposed to be restricted roads, we're supposed to minimize how many different roadway connections we have to kind of keep the traffic flow moving at a higher speed and then, and then keeping those turning movements at the intersection.
Okay, thank you.
The mayor for me? Ben, just a question on procedure, we're kind of, we're right up against the city limits right there, so we're talking about encroaching on county. Are we able to, how do we have any say-so to hardwire into our plan that we're going to build a road on county land?
You know, that's an interesting question, for sure. You know, it's typically what has happened in the past is it happens with development. And so when this, when this neighbor, when this neighbor decides to develop, I don't know if I could get it here, when they decide to develop, they'll have to put an application in Delafco, they'll, they'll annex into the city, and with that, when they develop, we'll tell them they need to dedicate their part of Tulley Parkway, and then at that time, we'll look at to see if that's a trigger point where this needs to be built. Additionally, over, over to the north, you'll see that, but it always becomes a problem where you have existing homes. And so existing homes, you know, typically where it's at is the city usually has to take that burden on to construct that portion in order to facilitate that, because there's not going to be development on their side that's going to pay for it. And then, you know, then the options is if you have an unwilling property owner, if it's in the best interest, you could go into eminent domain. That, that process is, is, in the last 20 years, I'm only aware of us handling it with a bridge. It's a, it's a lengthy, expensive process, and in the city, staff does everything in their means to avoid it. And this one's even, even more complicated because depending on the annexations, most likely, people in the county like being in the county, and they don't vote to be in the city. And so to eminent domain out of our jurisdiction, that's, it's tricky, I'd have to defer to the attorney, but I know staff working to build the road, we would work around that as much as possibly, and usually, we try to approach the property owners with something that is appeasable to both.
All right, so for our purposes now, it's, it's just, the bottom line is, we recognize...
I got it, so the curb and gutter is going to go in, you know, and so we're going to get a curb gutter and a sidewalk.
Yeah.
And then the road's going to jog out when it develops here and develops to the north.
It's a lot more complicated, there's a lot more involved than just simply built, deciding to build the road, where you have to Delafco and annexation and a whole slew of other things.
Right.
Okay, thank you.
No, no, no. All right. Looks like it's time for the public hearing. Public hearing on appeal of the Planning Commission's approval of tentative subdivision 20-05 Domain Estates, Phase 3, is now open. If there are any members of the public who would like to address the council on this issue, please provide your statement via public comment, state your name and address for the record. I do have speaker cards and a email. We'll go ahead with the speaker cards first, and I think I put them in alphabetical order. Oh, I couldn't, would you prefer to go first, sir?
Yeah, please.
Okay. We'll have Mike Smith, please.
Mike Smith, 1975 Elmer, and I used to own 2033 Elmer, which my son purchased from us here a couple of years ago. And when he purchased it, I made him sign an agreement that the softball fields would stay at least until I pass on, or until something else happened. So I'm at 1975, my daughter's at 1965, so those are the three parcels we're looking We, Ben did a really good job getting everything together, I do appreciate everything he did. I think we've come to an agreement with the developer as far as what we're doing. I do not, I can tell you, I do not like the second-story homes, because basically, any of those homes in the road or whatever, and I understand that, you know, if there isn't this two-story home where you're building, it should only be single-story, and I understand we're going across the street. So they've decided they'll put up screening so that they won't be able to see us, but it's still, it's still a little wrong, but, you know, we negotiated through it. Basically, I'm here to fight for the softball field and go on record that a two-lane road is what's needed there to make everything kind of flow right. And we, I talked to the council 15, or probably in 2004, 2005, about a couple of things, and nobody, you know, it was just a talk, and, and I never did get on record for at least having my views and what, what needed to be done. So I just wanted to come up today and be on record about the two-lane road and not encroaching on the field, because we have, you know, I don't charge, or my son now, he doesn't charge kids to go play. We've probably had two or three, I don't know, I think there's probably at least six or seven teams that are playing there right now. The main reason we give that to the community is because, well, my daughter played ball and I couldn't find a place for her to play, and Bradley Estates was encroaching on my backyard, so that lady's ground come for sale, and, and we purchased that to keep anybody from, from building homes right in our front yard, because we live in the county for a reason, and it's not to have neighbors. It isn't that I like, don't like people, it's just I like my privacy. And I appreciate, you know, so we had one field, and then, then there was other kids that couldn't find places to play because the schools charged, charged the kids for it. The, whoever else charges whenever they go in to have a place to practice and whatever, and anybody, I kind of give the field over to a few people and they take care of it now, and the teams, the softball teams and the little baseball teams and whatever, have a good, safe place to play ball. The only other thing I could mention about Ben is we talked about him giving me a variance for putting up a 13-foot fence. No, I think it's, he was going to give me a variance to put up a little taller fence when, when we ended up, when they ended up starting building those houses there. Thanks, Ben.
Yeah, I don't know if I approve that or not, but I definitely will consider.
He's on record as saying he did. Okay, thank you, Mr. Smith.
I'm Virginia Smith, Mike's wife. We moved on Elmer Avenue in 1992, and we moved out to the county to get away from being next to houses. And then in, in 2004, when the general plan, when they started talking about putting Tulley Parkway in, and it was going to be a four-lane, we opposed that in 2004, and then in 2005, it was approved like we didn't have any input at all. And if, if it is four lanes, it will just like ruin our whole quality of life out there. We'll take out the swimming pool, it'll take out my daughter's shop, it will take out the ball field. If we do, if we can't have assurances that will just be two lanes, then we won't really have a problem, and it won't be great, but we won't have a problem. But I would like to know, how are we going to be assured that it's just going to be the two lanes and that it won't take our property? Oh, I know when we talked to, we had the Zoom meeting, we were talking, the council was talking to the developer, I commented that it would take out our swimming pool and my daughter's shop, and the developers stated that it wouldn't affect, that that's all been addressed and it wouldn't affect anybody's property, but that wasn't necessarily the case. If it is two lanes, it won't affect it, but if it stays at the four lanes, it will take out all three of our property back parts, the pool, the softball field, and the shop, and the solar system of my daughter's, her shop, her solar system, and her chicken pen. So I just wanted to, I guess we have an agreement with the developer now, as long as the city and the county keep it at two lanes, we'll be okay with that, but if, if that can't be assured, then I would like for it, for that parkway to have to go on to the other, the, the project that's being proposed right now. go on to the other, the, the project that's being proposed right now, onto that land. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name's Jason Smith. My mom, my dad. Ben, first, I'd like to thank you for all the help that you've done trying to get all of this together without it having to come to a meeting. So my property is the one with the two softball fields. Just a brief history on it. My parents bought that 15 years ago. Me and my dad worked on the house together. I told them then, when I graduate college, I want to buy this place from you. Five years ago, graduated college, moved in there, started renting it from my parents. A year later, I bought it from them. We threw that 15 years on that back portion, softball field area. We had had cattle there, pigs there, all kinds of farm animals. And then we started getting more of a demand for softball and baseball teams. We were having two to three teams practice in there night in the summers. And at that time, there was just no other place for the teams to go. So we took the back portion of that field and made a second softball field out of it. Little bit smaller, more for the younger kids. So it's more younger kids that practice on the backfield, a little bit older kids practice on the front field. If the Tulley Parkway was to stay the four lanes, it would take that second softball field pretty much right at the second baseline, which if, without having a very large screen for foul balls and things like that, would pretty much render the first softball field also useless because I couldn't avoid damage to cars from foul balls, things like that, from the kids playing on the first softball field. So if kind of, if it's, can't go to two lanes, then it just takes out both of those softball fields for the community. If we can keep it at two lanes, I think that we can get away with having both softball fields still. But if not, I know that the one softball field will still be available at the two lanes. And that's pretty much all I have to say is that we would like to keep it to the two lanes if possible. Thank you.
Thank you, Jason.
I'm Nita Elfick, and I have been working with them on this project. One thing I, I want to add to what Jason Smith said is that one of the reasons would be if we could keep it at two lanes, and the second field would be fine, but you'd have to put up a big, you know, webbing for the foul balls is really what it amounts to. So it could be viable for both fields. And there certainly is a need for both those fields. And they have been, that first field there for 15 years and the other one came in afterwards. I, I do want to say that in the general plan, and I've worked on general plans, a lot of times, there's so many decisions to make, so many things to take into consideration that, and it's like this, this Tulley Parkway was, looked like someone put a ruler down and just drew it across to get over to Pease. So things, don't look at it in a detailed manner. And what's happened is it basically sort of destroys their property. It, it already, with the Tulley Parkway there, even if it's two lanes, diminishes the value of their property. And they haven't said anything about that. But, because that's their home. They want it to, you know, be their home, that they have, Mike's worked on it for over 30 years to develop it as a home. And I think the city council, when you're looking at decisions, I would request you also look at your constituents and how it affects them on the, these decisions you make. Now, the developer, and I feel for him, everyone wants to make a profit. That's a given. I'm not against it at all. But he doesn't own the land. He has an option on it. Doesn't have a lot tied up in that land to, to build those homes. The city would like to see those homes built. Now, that's 13 homes. And I believe your impact fee is $15,000. Is that correct, Ben?
Plus your minus, and it depends on what you consider.
Okay. So it's around $15,000. But I think that your last nexus that you put through on your impact fee was around $45,000. So let's reduce that to $40,000 or even $35,000. So for every home that is built, the city's taxpayers, everyday taxpayers here in the city, is subsidizing about $20,000 to $30,000 for every home. And I don't think that's, this is a different subject, but I, it's also part of this. So on 13 homes, you're looking at maybe $39,000, $390,000 that other people are subsidizing that the developer should be. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Elfick. I do have an email from Patty Smith. If I can find my glasses, I'll read. Dear City Council, on behalf of the ballplayers in Yuba City that use and have used the Smiths' fields over the years, I ask you to please come to an agreement that suits both parties in regards to the proposed land development. The youth in this city need to have access to all kinds of good recreation, baseball and softball included. I find it quite outstanding that a family like the Smiths would be so generous with both time and money to fill a need that the ballplayers in this community have. We should recognize and celebrate such families and do our utmost to protect and guard what they have so generously given to this community to serve our youth. Please be extremely careful in your decision-making in regards to the Smiths and their property. Thank you. Patty Smith. Okay. Sierra, anything online?
We do have one comment online, and it's quite lengthy. So bear with me while I read through it. It's from Melania McMurray. The city of Yuba City should not approve of tearing through the Smiths' softball-baseball field for many reasons, which include that this family chose their land to build a baseball-softball diamond on. This created a fantastic opportunity for our children and the local community to play sports on. Granted, this has been for free. These softball and baseball fields have created a place of opportunity for hundreds of children ranging in age from T-ball to college competitive sports. I played softball on the Smith, Smith field for about six years, from elementary school through high school. I met some of the best people in my life from playing a sport on this field. We should be a city that promotes these types of opportunities and safe recreation in our community. These softball fields are more than just fields in a backyard on the west side of Yuba City. They're a place where I learned discipline, responsibility, how to dive headfirst into a base, and metaphorically, life. I learned how to make friends and work together with kids my own age and to do what I loved best. That was softball. And I do that even more today. I credit the Smiths' family and many coaches that have taught basic mechanics of softball and how to be a good person on their fields. We shouldn't be tearing through softball fields in our community that create such opportunity for our children. We need to teach our children to dive headfirst into what we love and what we want to save. The Smiths' field is forever worth saving. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Okay. Thank you. Audience, yes?
My name's Cal Takkar. I'm with Crown Development. It's been a very challenging project from a lot of different aspects. But we were able to get together with the Smiths and work out an arrangement that works. It's modified on the condition of approval. Ben has modified. I wanted to also thank Ben and Diana for their hard work on this project. And started on this a while back, almost a year now. And they've done really hard work to make this, to keep this moving forward. The actual, the Parkway being two-lanes for the rec, on the, I can go on the record and say I'm, I'm for it as well. I'd rather see two lanes and four lanes going to that property. And I just wanted to clarify just a couple of things. Our property, Ben, if you don't mind going to the math. So the property is 4.11 acres. Tulley Parkway takes out nearly three-quarters of an acre of that parcel. That's nearly 20, that's, I think that's a little over, almost 20% of the parcel's size. And that's one of the other challenges of even being able to do this project. So it's right now, that's really it. If it was to move any further, it just makes the project unfeasible for us to do. And I also wanted to clarify, we do own the property. We're on title of record. I'm not sure where the option came from, but we may have been in contract. We've been in contract for a while when I first talked to Anita. But we're currently on title. Check the record. So that was it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Takkar.
Courtney Tasler. So my property is on the southwest side. It's the one with the solar panels and the shop. And if it's four lanes, it takes out the entire, all of our solar panels. And that is the only spot that we could get a permit to put our solar panels because of our leach lines and our well. I just wanted to say that. That's it.
All right. Thank you. Mr. Burns?
I was just curious why the city feels like they, I don't think it's been explained why they feel like they need a Parkway through there. And then also, maybe Ben, if, if everything is single-story around there, I can sympathize that, you know, they want their privacy. And privacy is important to Americans. So why not make all those lots single-story? That's my thoughts.
It, it really comes down to economics. In the city's zoning code, it's allowed to have two-story construction. And so it's, it's a right of development in, in the city for urban design. And it's really, and it's really a push for efficiency of land use that as, as the cost to develop is so much for the land burden and for the utilities that you'll, you'll start to see this scrunt, this crunch on, on land. And that's why unfortunately, you don't see a lot of the larger lots like you see south and west parts of town that you have because of the, of the cost burden to develop and the push for more efficiency of the land use. Regarding, regarding the, the reason for, for Tulley Parkway, I don't have a full exhibit of the, the city's growth area. So the boundaries that, that one day, with the general plan, we're proposing the, the city's going to grow out to Township Road, north to Pease Road. And really, this is going to be houses one day. And so we're envisioning everywhere around there to be homes. Even though it's trees and orchards, as time changes, it will become, become homes. And so with that, Tulley Parkway has been identified in our traffic model to facilitate that, that north-south traffic as the arterial. So you're, it's basically, it's going to be like a stabler lane where, where there's homes on each side and it funnels to, to there. And then it carries the traffic from Pease Road ultimately all the way to the south, Bo, on Bo Road.
Good evening. My name's Kevin Tasler. I live at 1965 Elmer. And I want to start off by saying in January, when there was a Zoom meeting due to COVID, I don't feel that people on Zoom were well represented during that. So thank you for having the opportunity to come in here and having it in the evening where people that go to work could actually come in. Number one, I'd like to say that I'm opposed to the whole, whole thing. But I understand that city needs to move forward and there's progress that needs to be made. So with that said, two-lane roadway, I completely understand. I don't believe that a property owner that's currently there should have to give up their property, any of their property, for a developer that's trying to make a dollar to earn more money to give up, just to give up my property so he can make more money by developing these homes. Two, the two-story, I don't know how many other two-stories are around in that development. I saw there was 150 feet that I mentioned going across the highway to where my house is from where the two stories would be. I'm pretty sure everybody here's been to a football game. You can sit on one side of the stadium, which is well over 300 feet away from the other end zone, and you can still see what's going on. The privacy is not there for 150 feet. Trees you can see through. Walls only go so high. That goes to the second or the third thing, where is there a speed survey that has been on a comparable street, like stabler, for what the speed is going to be on this Tulley Parkway? And I mention that because I know Yuba City PD's doing a, I think they're probably one of the better PDs around, and I interact with quite a few of them. However, on the evenings, and this isn't due to their fault, but there's a lot of street racing that goes on, on the nor, on Tulley Parkway. I'm sure if you live in northwest Yuba City, you probably hear the engines going Friday night and Saturday night, just up and down. Now, if people call in, that's when PD could deal with it. I don't know if people are calling in or not. But I know it takes a while for things to show, cops to show up, and it's hard to catch people in the act. So as for the Parkway, I would, I think that anybody that lives not only on the east side or the west side and county, that there is going to be a noise and fluctuation that's going to go up dramatically for traffic going down that roadway. Now, there was another, there's a sound wall put on Elmer on the north side of about the 2500 block from the developers at the top of the red line there. And I think that if it is a two-lane roadway that goes through there, there needs to be a sound wall that goes up there. And it also needs to take into account the speed that's going to be for Tulley Parkway. And the curves in roadways normally slow people down, which is a plus, especially if it's going to be used, be used like stabler for bicycle traffic and for people running and enjoying the, enjoying nice Yuba City. But also the safety of the people using the softball fields that are there because if a car goes off the roadway and to a group full of kids that are there because the roadway isn't designed properly to reduce speed. And I think curves in roadways actually reduce speed or that's going to probably go back to Moody. But I think the speed survey, I'd like to know about speed survey in a similar road. And then also request that there is thought about a sound wall and also that being a safety wall on both the east and west side. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Almost didn't make it. Good evening, council. Wes Schamanski, one of the many coaches and volunteers that helped with the field and the stuff with all the kids. You know, earlier, the narrative was for the police officers, how they're retiring, they live in the community. That's all because it's a fantastic community to live in. Well, the reason why it's a fantastic community to live in is because of families like the Smiths who donate so much and expect nothing in return. Those softball fields, you go back there, it's like the Field of Dreams. When I drive back there, I open the gate and I look and I go, wow. I go, two fields. They put batting cages in. Many generations of kids have gone through there. I see people at Home Depot, hey, you've been practicing at Smith Fields, you bet. Hey, I see people at the grocery store, the movie theater. Hey, how's the Smith Field doing? And I think to myself, look what it's done for all the kids and the youth and the generations. Now, it's, they're, they grew up playing ball there. Now their kids are playing ball there. Like I say, it's just, it's unbelievable. You'd have to see it. So to start chunking away at it, I don't know if it'd be that much of a positive impact. Like I said, the community is a fantastic place to live. And some of the elements that evolved to make it that way is the Smith family donating so much. They, like I said, donate so much and ask nothing in return, except for the kids to have a place to play and to have fun.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Hi, I'm Dave Butler. Hard, hard to follow that. But my son, he's a freshman baseball player at Yuba City. I've never met the Smiths, but I, I came here tonight on their behalf to just tell them thank you. Hundreds and hundreds of kids have come through and use these fields. And it's just a beautiful thing, like Wes said, for the community, for them to donate their property. It's, it's amazing. And anything that would diminish that, like Wes said, I would just say, hopefully it can stay to the two lanes and have a minimal impact. Said hundreds of kids have benefited from it. He's taken thousands of ground balls, thousands of swings in the cages. It's been a blessing. So that's, that's all I had to say. Thanks.
Thank you.
Hi, my name's Tom Williams. I've had the privilege of being part of Smith Field for the last couple of years. Smith Field is a special place in our community, and it should be preserved just the way that it is. So I would hope that you would consider that. So I would hope that you would consider that. Many generations have learned baseball and softball there. Hopefully many generations will can, to come will get the same privilege to practice and play there. So thank you, Smith family.
So I'm going to follow Tom Williams. My name's Tom Wickham, okay? So.
Two Toms.
T W is two of them, back to back, okay? So just a little brief history, we, I, I spent a lot of time on the weekends, okay? And I go around all different cities, all, all over the place, okay? We, we grade baseball and softball fields all over the place. This field, Smithfield, I, I've been blessed to have the opportunity to come in and help, help build some of it and, and help update some of it in the process of building mounds right now, dirt mounds. So the guys have quit moving our portable mounds around, along with just installed a new plate and, 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 and a new pitcher's mound, pitcher's rubber on the main field right, right in front of, of Kaitlyn Combo's gender, what, what do you reveal, revealing party this last weekend? And, 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 and congratulations Caitlyn on the, on the baby boy coming, okay? We built levees, we built cities, we built subdivisions, we built streets, pads all over the place. I've been in the business, worked for Chuck Jeffries years and years ago, 35 probably plus years in the business, met Ben down on the levee and, and down by the sewer treatment plant a few years back. All kinds of different grading, okay? But I'm here for the kids. I'm here on behalf of the thousands of kids that's been through Smithfield and the hundreds of coaches that have been through there. You guys cannot take that away, okay? You've locked up, I know, hey, we're, we're not, I'm not a public speaker, but I do want to get my point across. We've locked the schools up, okay? We've locked down the schools. We have to pay big money to practice at school facilities. We have to pay big, big money to practice and play baseball at Burns Drive at Blackburn Tally, which is aged out. At some point, maybe in this master plan, you guys can build a new, a new facility like all these, even smaller cities have. We have, we have peace officers in town that's been through Smithfield. We, we have city, city employees that's been through Smithfield coaching, coaching and giving their all to the kids of our, our city, okay? So please, whatever you do, make the right decision on behalf of the kids, okay? Thank you very much.
Thank you. We are getting new scoreboards at Blackburn Tally.
Okay.
No, they asked for it.
My name is Altonder Guzman and I live with Jason Smith. So the Smithfield is actually my backyard. For the past two years, I have dealt with quite an amount of dust in the house from the amount of children that practice on that field. Constant cars driving through and I can tell you, at first I was like, what the heck? What is going on? And then you walk back there and you see these kids just so lit up, so happy to be practicing on a private field. They are back there with light towers that the Smiths have provided. There's not only the one good field, but two good fields. During COVID, it was wonderful because we all got to walk the track, which kids got to go back there and get some energy out, some of the neighbor kids. So when we heard about the two or the roadway going through, not only would you be taking some of that last field, but you'd be taking a lot from the local kids. So on behalf of the Smith family, along with everybody else, I just think that you guys are probably bored of hearing the same thing over and over and over again. But when you hear it over and over and over again, it's likely true. So this whole thing isn't going to add to anybody's kids. They're going to be, it's going to be straight, just like anybody else. I just think that you guys need to leave the field alone and move on. Okay, thanks.
Thank you. Any more? Anybody online?
We have quite a few messages online.
Okeydoke. Let's hear them.
So I'll go ahead and get started. First comment is from Kathleen Andress. What about the Smith ballfields that are nonprofit based for both local softball and baseball teams? Do you have an alternative site for these kids to play? These fields were built by donated time, resources and land. These kids are the future of this community. They deserve an alternative site to be built for those that can't afford to pay to play sports. Why not use the empty lot across the street from Walmart and Sierra Central to build? Next comment is from Caitlyn Combo. I have known the Smith family for years. This family has a softball field on their property that I have grown up on and it may be removed. I have been a softball player since I was eight years old and the Smith family was with me every step of the way. This field has provided safe, fun and free environment for kids of all ages who have chose to peruse this sport. Please consider this field important in our future youth. Next comment is from Kathleen Andress. How is a two-lane going to hold up when the Seek Festival is in town and the town is inundated with even more traffic? Next comment is from Kevin Combo. I'm the president of the Sutter Buttes Thunder Softball and Baseball Development Program. We are a nonprofit 501(c) organization based in Uba City that specializes in the development of young athletes. Our goal is not only to produce solid competitive athletes, but also to mentor our youth into becoming upstanding and productive citizens in our communities. Many of our Thunder athletes have moved on to play at the collegiate level and to garner four-year degrees. Smith Ballfields located on Elmer Road in Uba City has been our home for these student athletes since 2005. If the proposed project to build a road encroaches on the Smith property, it will eliminate the eastern ball field and reduce the amount of teams and athletes that benefit by using the Smithfield. Many donated hours by parents and athletes and fundraising money raised by Thunder Organization families helped build and maintain the current fields. In addition, the generosity of the Smith family allows many local Little League teams from Peach Bowl, Sutter Area, Marysville and Sutter Buttes Little Leagues, a safe and free place to practice and utilize the fields. Ballfields in the Uba Sutter Area, including parks, are not designed to have baseball and softball practices held safely at those facilities. With middle and high schools in the area now charging Little League and development teams to use their fields, where are the nonprofit teams supposed to turn when they can't afford the fees that it costs to practice at those fields? We turn to families like the Smith family that have donated their time, money and land and have given back to the community by building these fields and supporting these student athletes who are chasing their dreams. I implore you to reconsider encroaching on the Smith property that has brought so much joy and enriched the lives of thousands of softball and baseball players and families in our small community. There's still more. Another comment from Christie Combo. Please keep the properties intact. All three of my children have had the privilege of practicing on these fields. This family has provided so much of their time and money to give back to the youth of our community, giving them a safe place to hold practices and better their skills and building their self-worth. Scott Bailey says, I'm also a business owner who owns Lumberjack's Restaurant here in Uba City. Please keep the street two lanes. The softball fields have given so much to the community. It was a privilege to watch my daughter grow and be coached on those fields. The Smiths have given so much to the children to play on those fields and I just want the city to please work with the Smiths to keep the fields. And I think that's all.
This certainly wins the award for the most public comment over email, so whoever orchestrated that or I, I think there's a lot of passion there. Any further comment from the audience?
I would ask that there be some way, if, if you think that a two-lane road for the Parkway is the right way to go, even though it, it has to be part of the general plan, is there any way that there can be a way to sort of document that that's what your intentions are? Because come the time they go to build it, maybe you're here, maybe you aren't.
Right.
Yeah, we need something in writing.
I agree.
Thank you.
All right. I'll close. Uh-oh.
One more comment from Ryan. Mike Smith is my father and I have personally coached hundreds of kids, best of all my kids, his grandchildren. This field is a blessing not only to me, but the Little Leagues and children of our community. I would like a decision tonight if you plan on taking this field of building for our youth.
So closing the public hearing and bringing the matter back to the council, and I'm, I'm going to jump out here first. I don't usually do that. It's not customary for the mayor to do so, but I'm going to anyway. Oh, yes?
Before you get started, do you mind if I give a quick clarification for the public?
Of course not. Go ahead.
Thank you so much. There's obviously been a lot of passion here tonight about saving the softball field. I can understand that passion. One of the things to keep in mind is the roadway is a general plan question. And a general plan is much like a giant puzzle piece, has the big picture of how the city is supposed to develop. And it's made of all little pieces of the puzzle, individual lots, long strands of roadway, these sorts of things. However, the general plan is not in front of the city council tonight. Admitting the general plan or changing the roadway, that's not actually in front of the city council. What we have is a tiny puzzle piece in front of us regarding this particular lot. So we have a lot of challenges as a city being able to try to use this puzzle piece to change all the other puzzle pieces. And we legally can't do that. The only thing we can do is address this puzzle piece. However, there is an option available to the council if it wants to. And that is, is after it addresses this puzzle piece, it can direct staff to look into the issue as to whether or not we actually need a parkway along that roadway or whether or not we can do it at two lanes. And they can also tell staff to address that issue in an upcoming general plan update. Because the real key issue here tonight for I think most of the public is not necessarily the development of this lot, it's really what is going on with that roadway and how is it going to affect the softball field? And those are general plan questions. And the general plan's not in front of us tonight, but the city council does have authority to direct staff to look into that for a future meeting when the general plan is in front of us. Thank you.
I appreciate that clarification. And I do, as I mentioned earlier, have the concern that whatever we decide here tonight may not be carried forward or may be forgotten or may be somehow missed somewhere down the road. So I do appreciate that, Mr. Chaffin. So my comments quickly. Number one, some, some people probably know that baseball is sort of near and dear to my heart in that the fact that has been explained here about the lack of fields available to the public in Uba City has been a longstanding problem. And frankly, you can't play baseball anywhere because the schools have locked their fields. Blackburn Tally is not accessible unless you rent it. And so there have been, over the years, several folks like the Smiths have taken upon themselves to, to take their land and generously convert it into baseball fields so the youth in our area have a place to practice baseball. And, and so to, to Virginia and Mike and, and Jason, who I know as Smitty, and Anita, obviously, and all those that are associated with them, I, you know, it is admirable that they would take a piece of their property and provide access to the community. You know, it's been a longstanding problem for me that we pay, I hope I'm not going to piss off the school district, but that we pay taxes, pay, pay taxes for these school facilities, yet we have no access to them. It, it, especially for stuff like the sports. I get it, they've got maintenance issues, et cetera, but nonetheless, you know, having these opportunities here. So I also want to commend Mr. Moody, Ms. Langley, the Smiths, Mr. Tackar. I know that this has been, and our city manager as well, I know this has been a long process of trying to come to an acceptable agreement to both sides. For me, you know, Tulley Parkway and having some familiarity with general plans and even in part of the development of the 2004 general plan, those are basically snapshots in time based upon things that are happening back then. You know, here we are 17 years later, a lot of things have changed. And, and to Mr. Chaffin's point, we do have the ability periodically to make general plan amendments. I would hope that the rest of my colleagues up here would consider in any motion to approve this, that we follow that up with what he suggested in regards to considering, taking a look at that general plan and perhaps, not perhaps, do consider making, directing staff for the general plan amendment, especially as it relates to Tulley Parkway, the road study that we're, traffic study that we're already engaged with, et cetera. But again, to those that were part of coming up to an acceptable agreement, may not meet everyone's needs, but you came to an agreement. And I appreciate that because I think it's important for us to address traffic issues, but it's also important to take into consideration things that benefit the community quality of life, especially when it has to do with our youth. I'll shut up. And Mr. Kirchner, any comments?
No, I, I'd like to thank the Combo family for being so involved at home. They're very passionate about this. But I would like to thank the, the Smith family for opening up your property. Like the mayor said, that's, it's a huge resource for our community. Very briefly, my wife and I did that on, on our property. We, we have a shed out back where we allow travel teams to come through because they needed an indoor batting pitching facility and we just don't have that around here. So, so thank you for providing that to our community.
I think I would just be echoing what everyone else is saying. I, I do, that, that was the two issues of concern was the traffic model and the general plan for me. And those were the two areas that what was assuring is that the parties got involved together and resolved it. That was really, on my part as one of five, that was really important in order for our community to have the kind of generosity that, you know, as the Smiths have done. This is what it takes for us to do this. It really takes the opportunity to speak up and say what you need to say and for us to listen, to clearly listen. And I, I'm, I, I agree with you, Mayor, and I like the suggestion of, you know, directing our staff to take a look at this for the Parkway and how that's changed over the years. And it's important, I think one thing I have learned as a council member is, yes, in so many discussions, there's been, well, it was said that it was going to be like this, right? And then all of a sudden, oh, little feedback back there? YouTube, thank you. And it's important to put it in writing. It's important to, to keep it that way. And so thank you. I, I learned so much this evening, hearing all the stories.
Yeah, thank you, sir. Again, run the risk of repeating, repeating a lot of the, of things that's been said, but thank you all so much for your passion and for taking the time to come here today. It's really good to hear directly from you or virtually the opinions and the benefit to the community is tremendous. From up, from this side, we do have protocol we have to go through, like the city attorney said, is one, one of the puzzle pieces. So we, it's my intention to concur with everything that's already been said. We will put something in place, however it may be, as long as it's legal, and we can ensure for years down the road that our wishes or our desire here tonight, which I think are in line with yours and the developers, are communicated for future councils. I think it's a good plan overall and a win-win. And thank you very much for everything.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I am going to repeat probably some things that's already been said up here, so bear with me. First of all, to the Smith family, what I'm hearing tonight What I'm hearing tonight, and I'm hearing through the passion of all those that spoke on your behalf, is the legacy that you have built for your family and you've built for this community. So, I want to say thank you. I grew up not in this community, but back east. I got the opportunity to play baseball at a school, you know? And we did little league at the fields below the school, behind the school. And to the mayor's point, it is quite disappointing to see what goes on, but this is what we have to deal with and where we're at. So, thank you. And beyond that, you know, I'm very thankful that you're before this governing body because there's many governing bodies that would take a look at that map and go, you know what? None of us were here. It was decided 15 years ago. Here's the lines. You know what? We're done. But that's not how this city works. That's not how this council works. And I want to also thank not only yourselves for coming to the table and having the conversation, Mr. Dakar. You know, you're a developer. They brought it up many, many times tonight. You're trying to make a profit, but yet you've recognized the legacy that this family has and what they've done. And I want to thank you for meeting them halfway. And then I want to commend further into Mr. Moody, our city manager, Ms. Langley, our staff here, because one thing that changed a few years ago, when the makeup of this council changed, was we really didn't like just a hard no, but how do we get to yes? And how do we get to yes? Compromise. And that's what's happened here. So, to all those at home, we're not interested in disrupting baseball fields, softball fields, or trying to come to something that's acceptable to everyone, that allows a legacy to continue, development to grow, and our kids to still benefit from what's going on in this community. So, with that, I want to say thank you because it's taken all those parties involved to get here. And I appreciate all the input because it's great when we hear from the community. But you probably had us when you said that you had an agreement, and we all looked at Tulie and went, yeah, we can do with a two-lane road. So, you know, but I appreciate the passion, and that's why I said I was going to repeat because that passion shows what you've created. And an applause needs to go to you for that because you have created a legacy that's going down through generation and generation, and I look forward to being here at a long time. And on a separate note, thanks for having baseball while we were all locked down this past year.
You can thank all the people. You can thank all the people who worked on it now. Because I don't work on it. It's theirs to take.
So, anyway, thank you all. But like the mayor said, where we're at tonight, we can't deal with the biggest issue that's in the room, which is Tulie Parkway. So, you know, as the fifth to five up here, I think that we do need to, Mr. Mayor, follow up at a later date to memorialize the intent for Tulie to be looked at, whether it's needed, a two-lane, do what we can to mitigate that. So, that would be staff direction, if that is the will of this council. But the matter before us has to do with a recommendation. And Mr. Moody, if you could get me, there we go. If you are ready, Mr. Mayor, I'm willing to.
Yeah, let me hold off for just a second, sir. Mr. Chaffin, once again, the item of asking our staff to take a look at the Tulie Parkway through the general plan process and a potential amendment, is that something that we direct for a future meeting to discuss, or is that something we can take up? It's not on our agenda tonight, so that's the reason I'm asking.
Right, you can't direct staff to either come back at a future meeting, or you can direct staff to consider an amendment to the general plan regarding the Tulie Parkway to a two-lane roadway as part of it based on traffic modeling, and then to return to you at that time.
Okay. I think I would suggest prior to your motion is that we just direct the city manager to bring it to a future meeting. Yes, yes.
I would just like to give a brief update related to the travel demand model update. So, we've gone through and done the travel demand model, the creation. We know that the recommendation is to reduce it from a four-lane road to a two-lane road. At this point in time, what we're doing is costing out all of the roadway improvements so that we can calculate what the road impact fee would be. The next step would then be to work on the general plan amendment to modify the roadways, the transportation circulation element within that general plan amendment, to bring that forward to council. So, we are in this process now. It's still going to be a few months to complete the formalization of these recommendations. And so, as council provides direction to staff, what we need to understand is if you're looking for us to bring something to you immediately, that looks different than what's going to be brought before you within a few months.
So, Ben, a question for you. Do we have any other pending general plan amendments? I know we usually try to do these in batches because we only have so many bites of the apple on the amendments.
I mean, what I'm hearing from Mr. Chaffin, Chaffin and Public Works Director, is that you provide us direction tonight to consider the two-lane alternative in the future traffic model update, general plan amendment, and that's on the horizon in the next six months or so. And so, with that, I feel like staff has that direction given in the minutes, recorded in the minutes, and then that will be reflected when we come to you with the travel demand. But it is definitely at our option to do a separate amendment, but based on the noticing, the timeline, to go to the planning commission, come back, you really might be on the same timeframe.
Okay. Mr. Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would make a motion and move that we adopt a resolution of the city council, the city of Yuba City, denying the appeal and upholding the planning commission's decision to approve the TSM 2005 Domain Estates Phase III, APN 59530027, and associated mitigated negative declaration with modified conditions of approval four and 4.1.
Second. All right. I have a motion by the vice mayor, a second by councilperson Kirchner. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none? The appeal of the planning commissioners, or the motion passes unanimously. All right, there you go. So, just again, just want to make sure I button this up correctly. Staff has enough direction on the GP amendment based upon our discussion tonight.
So, I'll defer to Shannon, but if I see three nods, then we'll record in the minutes that there's been council direction to look at modifying it to two lanes with the next general plan update.
All those in favor, nod. Okay, all right. We got it, Mayor. There's your, there's your proof. All right. Okay, we'll move to future agenda items. Item number 11, this is the opportunity to discuss with the city manager about items that came up in the meeting this evening that you would like to have brought back to the council at a later date. Are there any comments relating to the agenda that may have come in during the meeting?
No public comment.
Okay, from the council, any future agenda items you would like us to consider? Seeing none? All right. Reports and communications. Followed reports and communication items are provided for the council's information. No action can be taken on items under this section unless the council agrees to include it on a subsequent agenda. I'm going to change things up here a little bit because we always have the same cadence, the same rotation. So, we're going to start on my right, and we're going to go with council member Kirchner and give him an opportunity. We'll be rotating this every week, or every two weeks, so.
Through the mayor. Thank you. I'd like to start by talking about when the chief did his presentation earlier, and it struck me that we're only going to have a few more of those until it's time to say goodbye. So, thank you for that presentation again, chief, and hopefully you know how much this city and this council appreciates your people. And I'd also like to take the time to thank the mayor for his leadership during this thing called COVID. It cannot be an easy task, so thank you for that, Mayor. So, what's been going on? Well, Gilzeizer was canceled this month. On the 7th, we had our second meeting for the Business Retention Task Force, which I will defer to the vice mayor because that's kind of his thing. Mosquito abatement. On the 8th, we talked about the, what's a bug person? Edamal? Edamal? Yeah, there you go. They got a merit increase. Also, the general foreman got a merit increase, a raise. There was a change on their Market Street lease agreement with Jeff Helm. It's going to go from six months to a full year. Their bond portfolio is up, and they're happy about that, making money. They replaced a Tech 1 due to a dismissal, one of their employees. They have three brand-new pickup trucks. They finalized the agreement on their aerial spray. The prices are 1,275 for the larval and 2,300 for the adult that has to do with mosquitoes. And, oh, and the other thing is that the dead bird hotline is up and running, so if you find a dead bird on your property, you can, you got a hotline. That's a big deal. And also mosquito fish are now available for pickup. So, lots of good stuff happening with mosquito abatement. On the 15th, which was last Thursday, I attended an event out at Peachtree. Many of you might have been there. It was the Heroes on the Green. You were there. And that's really special. I think that's what makes our community special, is there was a need for a family who, they lost somebody that was in law enforcement in Marysville. And so, the community really came together in support of the family. And so, that was just incredible to see. And that's about it. With that, I'll defer back to the mayor.
Next up is Councilman Harris.
I'd be happy to do that. Last two weeks has been fairly light. I will get to RHA, Regional Housing, a lot of routine business. One of the major things that we came up with was an agreement with the local transportation authority regarding pedestrian accommodation sidewalks and signalized signals and a lot of money and infrastructure being put into those certain projects and associated with the transit authority. So, the, RHA is coming up with a grant down here, Richland Housing, and there's a way to embed improvements to pedestrian facilities and signalized intersections and whatnot into that grant. And so, they have an agreement between those two agencies to make that happen. Hopefully, the grant will go through. I've had a couple conversations with David Reed at Yubusota Arts and Marty Sanders at Chamber of Commerce regarding establishing a film commission here locally. I've talked about that before, so the bottom line is that conversation is continuing. It should be, we're trying to do it with as little impact as possible. We just don't want to come in into, for example, even here, asking for a little bit of seed money with just an idea. My opinion is we need to come in with a plan, and then examples of how that plan has been shown in other communities to work. So, hopefully, we can pull that off, and we want to do that. Probably a lot of donated time going through other websites for other film commissions and whatnot and follow those examples so we can come in here and give a viable presentation for that. Secog, I want to thank George Barlow, who put together, for a previous presentation, but he put together a drone view of the railroad right-of-way, Unit Pacific Railroad right-of-way, which we envisioned to be converted into a bike path. Part of it, of course, as some folks may know, goes from Acacia out in Sutter to just about Hooper in Yuba City. We want to extend that all the way into Plumas and Bridge and beyond, hopefully via the railroad trestle, link it up to Marysville, and then the vision hopefully is all the way out to somewhere in the area of Sycamore Ranch. So, in theory, we can get on, link up to that bike path and be on a bike safely all the way through that entire area, which of course will bring opportunity to folks to get to and from shopping or recreation and whatnot without beating their car. So, to our quality of life. But hopefully, we can get that off the ground. George put together a, like I said, a presentation using his drone, and I was asked to make that presentation before the Secog Board of Directors, which I did with George's much-appreciated help. Transit Authority, again, we're back to the, that's the main thing we did, a lot of routine business. We are still discussing the new transit facility that we have decided upon a site out at Avon, what is it? Is it Avon? It's not Avondale. Avondale, off of North Beale Road in Linda. And of course, we're back to the agreement with RHA that was discussed as well.
All right, thank you. Counselwoman?
I like how you mixed it up, Mayor. Nice. I attended the Feather River Air Quality Management District meeting, and three key points on that is we reviewed the audits of the 2018 and the 2019 and 20. We approved a teleworking policy in order to accommodate for staffing. It was a very complete thorough policy. There's still some small grants that are available for schools, $2,000, $3,000 or less, if they want to use them for science programs or air quality. There's some grants available out there for the community. I also attended, along with Councilman Harris, the Sutter Butte Flood Control Agency meeting, which we had a presentation. It was a thorough presentation by the Yuba Water Agency, which flood risk. And talking about drought, we also talk about floods in the preparation of the two. So, there were several projects that were in the action right now, working in Yuba County. One of the big things in the presentation that I found really interesting, along with this whole subject of the work on the levees, through the Yuba Feather Forecast, the reserve operations, is how Yuba County Water is, or excuse me, Yuba Water Agency is working on improving the forecasting of atmospheric rivers from climate resiliency future. It was very interesting to see that when we get these large amounts of, when we do get large amounts of rain, it comes in these huge amounts in these clouds, and that's how we get most of our rain. New Billards Bar Secondary spillway is in the process, so they're going to be working on that. Participated on the CDBG Proposals Review Committee along with Ben and Jaspreet. Excellent, they were well-prepared, along with the mayor, and we have some recommendations that hopefully will come to the full board, I think sometime in June. So, hopefully, the council will be pleased with our recommendations. Also had a quick meeting with our CM, like we all do, Dave On. He's always on the go. Appreciate the guy, but he always makes time to have the conversation. So, we are scheduled a committee meeting for 429 on the homeless workshop that was recommended, I think, two or three meetings ago. So, internally, we're having a meeting to prepare for the homeless workshop, and once we get that put together, we'll come back and report that to the full council. A couple of state committee assignments that I'm part of. I attended the League of California Cities Latino Caucus on California redistricting and the process for that, how it's going to unfold in the state of California. One of the other ones, it was a lengthy meeting, which was within the League of California Cities on the Committee for the Revenue and Taxation Policy Committee. And I'm not going to go through every single detail because there's a lot of information in this PowerPoint and the conversation of legislation, but I'm going to give some quick highlights, mostly just to share with our council and anyone else besides us in the room, watching on the YouTube, if they are watching, or Zoom, wherever. The state is reporting a windfall of $2 billion, which is above their projections and they may revise. They have done two urgent actions on the budget. One was 536 million for wildfire, forest, and resiliency. Another- Another was $9.6 billion for direct COVID-19 impact support. One of the long-term highlights of potential funding that may be coming down to cities, because that's our interest, is over five years, the state is projecting $20 billion for homeless intervention. How is that going to look? I don't know where the money's coming from. That wasn't discussed, but it is something for us as a city, and based on the report from our police chief, it is an issue that we would like to resolve and do, you know, better work in our community.
Do you have a question, sir?
I was going to wait, but I do have one if you're asking. Not really a question, just a statement. If you have the opportunity, I would certainly appreciate it as one member of this council when they discuss money for the homeless, that we also consider money to the victims of the homeless when they vandalize and pollute and whatever else they do to our residents. It would be nice to hardwire some money into that for some reimbursement.
Okay. Possibly that's something we can do something locally. Good point, thank you. Another projected revenue, there was a discussion about projected revenue shortfall for cities. Some cities are statewide, a $6 billion shortfall. And where they have discovered some of the shortfall was specifically 51% on the transient hotel occupancy tax, the TOT that we talk about. That's a big conversation in the council with impact fees and master tax conversation. And just for tourism, the aspect of the work that Councilman Harris would like to bring in the Film Commission, that ties all into that. The other decline is 28% to sales tax revenue. The unknowns at this point in referencing to our city, property tax impacts are delayed by 18 to 24 months and are not fully understood to how that impact would come to us as a revenue issue.
Now, in the discussion for cities to receive the American Rescue Plan funding from the U.S. Department of Treasury, one of the things in outline that I forward to our city manager, which went, I think, to our director Spencer Morrison, is how to access the funding, how to begin that process. Cities, the state of California is receiving $8.3 billion for California cities. We are projecting around $16 million plus, depending, I think those formulas are being tweaked and changed. There's also a $10 billion capital project fund, which is to carry out critical capital projects directly enabling work, education, health monitoring, including remote options in response to public health emergencies. And the last thing that was said within this meeting is that the details are not all out there yet. So there's a lot of discussion. These were just the highlight points for the revenue tax. And lastly, I just want to thank our community for attending our meetings, being engaged and supportive of the work. We truly do listen. If you haven't seen the efforts, we do respond. We are engaged with our city manager, Dave Vaughn, who's been on our team, not even 45 days, I'll take a guess, and he has been instrumental in leading the direction of this city, along with our management team. And truly, the city is not as, we could not do as much as we can without the people that work within the city. The people like Sierra, like Brian, the people behind the counters, the people that make sure your water functions and all those things. So I just want to thank everyone for all their service and their time. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Mr. Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I'm going to piggyback off of Councilperson Esmondola's report there about tax and rev. Hold on to your shorts because I can tell you two of the ideas they floated around on how to fund that. The governor has proposed previously to raise the top state tax bracket to 16.4 from 9.3, and they're proposing a net worth tax as well, one of the senators out of Southern California. Both of those were DOA when they arrived, but as everything, everything's permanent until Sacramento gets together again, so hold on to your shorts, but that's a couple of the funding mechanisms. And then a lot of the other areas, like she said, is down in the state, and I am so thankful that this council worked as hard as, I wish our gentleman had stuck around tonight that thought we didn't do things during the past 12 months because this council has taken initiatives to keep this community open. Our sales tax revenue from previous quarters came in far beyond what HDL projected. We're an ag-based community. We've done well. So kudos to my fellow council members, and we'll get there eventually. So been a busy few weeks. Bogstore Master Plan Tax Agreement. Been working on that. The only thing I will say in that process is we have to do something and come to an agreement that is in still the best interest of our constituents, which is the residents of Yuba City. So I hope that, Mr. Mayor, we can get this thing across the finish line, but know at the end of the day, and I know you stand true on this as well, we have to make sure we're doing what's in the best interest of the residents of our city in that matter. I've been busy with the Budget Ad hoc Committee, and boy, come out of taxis and then we go straight in it. I'll be here all week going through things, looking forward to bringing reports back to the full council as the city manager and the department heads are walking us through this and looking at the needs. As I have said already, today is Tuesday, two days in a row. I look at things not two different ways. Most people look at things as wants and needs. There's actually a third bucket, and you have obligations, needs, and then wants. So we got to make sure that we're funding the things that we're really, you know, first of all obligated to do for our residents here, so we're working through that. Transit, Councilmember Harris already brought that up. They're working for the, through the process of the next generation transit facility. And through that meeting, we also were notified that Yuba College is not looking to start up in-person classes until possibly next spring. So that is holding down some of our transit routes, and that's a huge transit route for the authority, back and forth, because the kids ride for free between Yuba City, Marysville, and out to the college. The Retention Task Force, you could have went ahead and taken a lead on that, that is fine. We had a second meeting. Data was back. We dove down a little bit further into that. We will have actions hopefully coming forward in sometime in May to where we're actually getting in front of businesses again, asking the three questions. What are we doing that's right? What are we doing that's in your way? And what are we not doing that we should be doing for you? Because yes, we want to grow. We want the people here to, you know, to come in, but we got to take care of every business here from mom and pop all the way up to the Walmarts because they generate the sales tax. That generates the dollars to provide the services when it comes to roads, streets, parks, wrecks. We're one community. RWMA, on that, the latest update is we're still working on the JPA. It is expected to come back before the RWMA at the May meeting, so I fully expect it to be coming before the jurisdiction in June. And the timing that we're looking at is we have to get a JPA in place because, help me, Mr. CM, it's 1383, correct? The bill? Yes, thank you. 1383 has to do with diversion and recycling and putting food waste in with green waste and everything else, and all of that comes into effect January 1st, and it starts having fines and penalties, I think, the following January, if I'm not mistaken. Am I on track?
That is correct.
Thank you. There's a lot of moving to this, so that's very important. The thing to remember behind that is all the jurisdictions have to approve the JPA as we see what the RWMA is going to look like going forward. That's it as far as work. I do want to say a couple of thank yous. First to the DBA. Nice to, I wasn't able to attend, and you'll figure out that one here in a second, but they held their spring concert down on Pluma Street. I love seeing this community start getting back to normal, and thank you to them for holding that. Looking forward to the summer stroll coming up in a couple of months. I do tonight want to say thank you to three individuals, two of which represent us at the state, and one of which used to represent us at the national level, but he's still a friend in this community, and that is Congressman Doug Lamatha, Senator Jim Nielsen, and Assemblyman James Gallagher. They've been standing in the gap, and they stood in the gap, and why wasn't it the DBA Spring Concert? I was at the largest sporting event that's been held in California in 14 months. I was at the Red Bluff Roundup because our families ties to that, and they were instrumental in getting that going and keeping that available and opened up. And I want to say thank you to them because that's going to lay the foundation to our stampede coming up in September. So I just want to say thank you from Yuba City to them for laying that groundwork. Mr. Mayor, that's all I have.
All right, thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor. Thanks to you and the audience for participating in your local government. I really do appreciate that. We don't always agree, but it's very important for us to be able to hear what you all have to say, whether it's here in person or via technology. A couple of things on the Sutter Buttes Flood Control Agency. We did have a meeting with their executive director, I think that's his title, Michael Pissett, really good guy. There is going to be a bit of a change in a positive way to the fees that they charge for development for levees, and that is, again, a helpful thing. I'd like to think that we had a hand in making that occur by asking them to take a look at those fees, and they did so and have produced something. I don't know if they presented to you all at your SABUCA meeting, but those are things that have come about from the Development Impact Fee Committee. Councilwoman Esmondola mentioned the Community Development Block Grant Program. There's two portions of that, one that's a COVID side, and the other was the normal program, if you will. And again, I know we've said it before, but quickly, Jaspreet, Ben, and George Barlow, thank you for the work you guys are doing. We're looking forward to bringing back recommendations for some really important programs. And one sort of innovative one that the councilwoman and I are pushing with Ben's help and staff's help. Budget Ad hoc Committee, you know, that effort is just to try to make sure that, you know, that when we come to you, council, that we are telling you that, hey, look, we and staff have come together with, you know, a good document going forward. Want to thank the vice mayor. I was away over the weekend watching college baseball in Iowa. You know, you'd be happy to know that things are pretty wide open out there and the fields are accessible. But, yeah. And boy, let me tell you, I think things in the transportation industry are getting back to normal. Airports were packed, the planes were packed, so we're inching our way back. With that, you know, I don't want to get too syrupy here, but, you know, this is a good council, and they listen. Again, you may not always agree with our decisions, but we work well together, we work well with our staff, we work well with this rookie city manager over here and this very, very well-respected city attorney, but at the end of the day, we're trying to make the right decisions. And, you know, our goal, I think the vice mayor mentioned earlier, is not trying to find the easiest path to no, but finding, you know, a path, the way to say yes. And I think that's a cornerstone of us. So with that, it's been a good meeting, and I, again, appreciate the public input, and we will go ahead and close this meeting at this point. Thank you.